Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Armada Township Planning Commission to order. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, Chris?
Abercrombie.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Finn.
Here.
Jabara.
Here.
Carrot.
Here.
Kutchy.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
The gang's all here, thank you. Next is the approval of our agenda if there are no amendments.
Propose.
Approve the agenda as presented.
Approval of the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a second.
A second there.
All right, Steve, all in favor to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And next is our approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting of July 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, where are we? Sarah, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. Sit down, please, Chris.
Chris.
Okay, it's our first public comment period. We do have some public out there. How are you doing, John?
Good.
Good?
I'm good.
Good for now? Okay. You always get another shot. Get warmed up, good. We don't have any public hearing tonight, so we'll move into our reports and correspondence. First thing that's on the desk is a email from our township attorney regarding the Boo Boo's Boneyard. And it's a little confusing, but they denied the application to leave to appeal, which basically means they've exhausted their options in court and.
So now it goes to enforcement.
Goes to enforcement, okay. What else is... Okay, so the Blake's Traffic Study, we got the traffic study in the landscaping. Meeting was held with the Executive Office, the Road Commission, and Blake's. And a grant is being pursued through the federal Safe Streets For All program. And did you say there were going to be some minutes? Are there any minutes available from that meeting?
They came back in and they were still wrong, and John asked for a correction, and we haven't gotten the correct.
Okay, so they'll be coming. Nothing new with the Trillium Wedding Barn on 32.
Actually, she called today.
Okay.
And she just wanted to find out, okay, what are my next, help me with my next steps. And I explained to her what she needed to do to get that site plan going. She's looking at potentially changing architects because she called her original architect and they were blowing her off.
I think she told me too, because she got me first.
So, she asked if I had the names of any other firms that she could look into. I gave her three names, said, you know, I can't vouch for any of them, but these are three names that we've worked with before, so.
Okay, so she's still working.
She's targeting, hoping to get stuff in for an October meeting.
So. A site plan and.
A site plan, yeah.
I thought you said September.
No, no, September, she needed by tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. All right, we just have the Boo Boo's Hidden Rivers, they received the updated master deed exhibit and it's pending the engineering approval.
Yeah, they actually sent it back and said it's still wrong.
Okay.
The Exhibit B, so waiting for that to come back in.
Okay, thank you. Latham Development off of Powell Road, letter was sent reminding the developer that their site plan will expire in October and have not heard back yet.
No.
Okay. De Hunt Storage, nothing new. Miller Farm, nothing new. Frontier Market, certified letter was sent from the supervisor to the property owner about a bakery opening without planning commission approval.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Okay, so they.
And they had, they did come in and talk to, they're leasing the kitchen. They came in and talked to John and I, explained to them what they need to do to come into compliance, and they are working on that. And we told them, you can't do any of this, it's got to come from the property owner. So, it was the lessee that came in.
Okay. And.
Okay, a question.
Okay.
So, it's not really frontier then?
It is not frontier. They are leasing their kitchen, which was put in illegally to a third party, and the third party was told, you've got to deal with this, and we told her, no. The property owner has to deal with this, so.
So, are they shut down then?
They are, they are not, they are not open to the public. I did leave a message with the fire marshal, asking him to please get out there to inspect the equipment to make sure that it meets fire safety guidelines. And we told the lessee that the owner needs to pull the permits for everything that was installed so that we can get them inspected by the trades inspectors. So, they're not open to the public right now until they can get this stuff done.
Is that something that we allow for, like, do we allow the farms or whatever to lease out part of their building to the public? Is that something?
It is a, it's an existing commercial building. It always has been a commercial building, but it never had a kitchen legally installed in it.
I didn't realize it was.
But, the other step that she was told is that, yeah, they need to get all these inspections done, but the property owner needs to get site plan approval before they open it to the public.
Why did we send up fire department? Did you say?
Fire safety inspection.
It's part of the process.
It's, it's all part of the process.
Mm-hmm.
It's all part of the process. It doesn't matter if he goes before or after.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. As far as our commission projects, nothing happening with this second home on property. The ordinance book audit, we are currently going through our ordinance book now. Master plan was adopted by the township board at their July 10th meeting. Resolution sent to McKenna on 7/11 for inclusion and finalization of documents for printing.
And we still don't have them, so.
Now, that's a shocker.
So, we're just waiting for them to come from McKenna at this point, the final.
Sorry, I can't help it sometimes.
Okay, then the ordinance on the ag acceptable uses is on the agenda tonight. First draft was supplied by our planner for review July 3rd, and then we'll be looking at that tonight. And then closed project, we just have Larry's Parking Lot, no response. Applicant will need to send, submit county permits and the project is closed. Are there any other reports, correspondence?
No, I'll make a motion to receive and file reports and correspondence as presented. Support.
Okay, Beth and Sarah, receive and file the reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, which brings us to new business. And this is the MTA renewable energy sample documents. This is all part of the new legislation that was removing local control for large wind and solar energy projects. And the MTA has put out some sample ordinances and things, and I'm going to kind of let the planner take over. He's got a big smile, looks like she's writing, so.
I'm ready.
Take it away.
So, as you may be aware, so there was an effort by various parties to eventually put something on the ballot associated with this facility, this legislation. That did not get enough signatures to make it this year's ballot. So, the reality is, is that this is becoming in effect, I believe it's November 29th. So, it is coming, and so I wanted to, again, because of this, MTA put out some different materials as far as some samples and things of that nature, but to either do the CREEO option or to do a text amendment to have a workable ordinance. We really need to start making choices now, so then we can meet the deadlines to then be ready for November. And so, kind of a quick rehab, there's a lot that's been, there's some things that have been clarified since the last time we really talked about it at our general training, and then there's some stuff that has still not yet to be clarified. So, I just wanted to have that quick conversation, so it's for wind energy facilities, solar energy facilities, and energy storage facilities, all three, and from a commercial grade are part of this legislation. So, speaking frankly, we are not in a high wind gathered area. So, the likelihood that we have something that's a wind facility that comes in, I think, is not very likely. So, I don't think it's pressing to make a choice on that.
I'd say we're not in a, not in a very sunny climate either.
So, for solar, you do have a transmission line, so that does make you of potential interest as opposed to other communities. And I believe you've already had one inquiry some time ago, is that accurate?
We did have a guy call and say, what can I do with my property? Can I put solar panels on it? And I said, well, yeah, but there's a whole process that you have to follow to do that, so.
And I believe, if I remember correctly, you do have regulation on the books for solar.
We do, we do.
And then you have the energy storage facilities, which pretty much nobody has that because that's not something we originally have thought of. Unless you put it under industrial for like battery or you call it a public utility, that would be the quickest way to kind of allude to it, so.
We do have that public utility ordinance that we just found.
Correct.
So.
So, some communities, you could potentially in a moment could connect it to that. For the nature of these facilities and drafted language, those are typically not sufficient enough to deal with the grade that this is dealing with. We're talking about acres of lithium batteries. So, that's a very different scenario as opposed to a gas regulator building, that's a 10 by 10. Very different. So, the nuts and bolts of it is, is that you essentially have three different options associated with it. So, one is to have a CREEO, and so what the CREEO does for these commercial grade operations is you're going, you're forced to go through the state. Now, by adopting a CREEO, you do have the local public hearing, but ultimately the decision is made at the state level. So, it can go through the, still the planning commission, it can still go through the township board. They'll listen to your statements and take that into consideration, but to what level that is, I don't know. The other thing with the CREEOs is there's specific financial gains that are associated with it. So, it's that $2,000 per megawatt that you can get from a community for that, in which there's a certain fee by being a host community. There are certain thresholds associated with it, where everyone can get 75,000. If there's multiple jurisdictions, you get 1,500. One of the biggest concerns with the CREEO is that some interpretations, which I would say generally widely received, is that it can't just be the township that adopts a CREEO, it also has to be the county. Because they, in the definition of those different host communities, it says villages, townships, cities, and counties. It doesn't clarify if a county has to be involved in your zoning process to be part of this impacted community situation. So, that's a big question mark still with the CREEO situation. And then the regulation is more forgiving than what you customarily see within any jurisdiction that I've ever worked in. So, that's option one. Option two is that you evaluate our zoning ordinance and we say, so this is what represents our local values. And so, you essentially keep with your local process. So, this is a faster process than the state, and so there is certain level of developers that have talked to some different common clients that they don't want to go through the state process by default. They would prefer to work with us locally here and there as long as those regulations are reasonable. And so, that would be, now, could they always start the process locally and say, you know what? This isn't what we signed up for, we're going to go to the state. They can choose to do that. They can always still opt to go to the state process. But this is providing us a local option to process it locally to get our regulations. And then the third option is, is to not have a ballgame at all, so you don't reference it. You can say the state takes care of it, but not do a CREEO or things of that nature, where you have a local say, you get the funding and things of that nature.
I have a quick question. What is the difference between this compatible renewable energy ordinance and your workable renewable energy ordinance?
So, it's process and requirements. So, CREEO requires you to go through the state.
Okay.
And this, I said the local level, we haven't seen, we don't have clarity on if we recommend denial, does the state turn around and approve it because they don't agree with our denial? That could very well be the case, and then they move forward with that project. There are also different host community funding components that are in there that you wouldn't otherwise customarily have.
The CREEO has the funding elements that our local ordinance would not have.
Correct. However, you can, in my opinion, still achieve a similar objective. So, you can still have performance guarantees, so ensuring that you have money to take care of a decommissioning plan. So, those are things we already have to deal with it. There are certain other performance standards that could be conditioned, so if you do not have the fire apparatuses to deal with a lithium storage facility here, or the training or the emergency components, it isn't unreasonable to have some level of that cost, because we only need this because of this, that you could potentially get that funding to have a safe community. And so, as opposed to your workable ordinance, that's our standard process. And the other thing is, is our requirements. So, some of the biggest complaints with the state regulation is that wind energy is all based on where the dwelling units are. It's not based on property line. Same thing with noise. Noise is based on the outer wall of the dwelling unit. It's not based on property line. And it's, I believe it's the 65 decibel readings, as opposed to most ordinances are somewhere in 50 and 45.
I thought that was at the property line, still.
And it's still at the property line.
Okay.
But the state says that's at the dwelling. So, it, so there's more, so it's.
More lenience.
More leniency than what I've ever seen in any, even the most pro communities for allowing these things. They don't, this is a bridge too far for most communities.
In Michigan, you've only dealt with Michigan townships or communities.
So, we've looked at some same ordinances from other states as part of it, and I would still generally lean towards that's not as common.
So, you're saying that the state ultimately has the final call, or?
In a CREEO, correct.
In the CREEO, in the first option.
So, that if we were to do the second option, then that would give the communities the most, like, the most pull on whether it's actually achievable or not?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I understood too, so I'm thinking, yeah, that's what I was thinking. About a clarification also.
Facilities under the threshold mentioned in the front page here, under 100 megawatts for wind, under 50 megawatts for solar, correct?
So, what we would do with the workable ordinance is we would still say, if you meet these thresholds, you still should do our local process. And if you choose to do the state process, then you can do the state process, but we don't have the local say.
Why would you, why would you not, I mean, is it, why would you not adopt your own, why would you be part of the CREEO if you're just giving away your?
Some communities, it's not worth the fight. They'd rather say this is something the state's taking on. It just depends, community, I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer with it. Each community has to figure out what's best for them.
You said the county has to be CREEO. I thought it was based, I thought that was an option, the way I read it.
So, again, you can look at MTA's interpretation, you can look at the University of Michigan's interpretation. University of Michigan's think tank, they say that it has to include the county because of how they define those communities. It's all four R listed, not any language in there when it talks about it if the county zones or doesn't zone.
Has it been adopted that way?
Um.
Or they're, it's a livable document, can change by September, you know?
Oh, any ordinance can be changed, yep.
Yeah.
That's true. I haven't had a conversation with your county to see what their legal opinion is on it. I know for some counties, they say, yeah, we're not doing that. And so, it's like, oh, well, I really hope this doesn't need you. But that's something that we're just not sure of. And the, and the, they haven't done any state agency rules like they did with marijuana to clarify processes and things. They're just hanging out.
Yeah, they're about to, from what I've found out.
They're about to do a lot of stuff.
I know.
It's great.
So, we'll see.
So, we have a solar energy system that does address large systems, but we don't have anything that addresses the energy storage. But would our, the solar ordinance that we have would be considered a workable local ordinance?
So, I haven't fully vetted through some of your, and I wasn't part of that process when you guys adopted it. I would say you probably don't align with the state requirements, just based on knowing what most people do. So, I guess the biggest thing is a gut check on this planning commission. Is this the bare minimum that you're willing to give to say these are, reflects the quality that we want in a solar facility if it's in our community? If the answer is yes, then I would say no action is necessary. This is what we want, and so you put that foot forward. If you want to make some other cuts to it to make it different or make it more aligned to the state, we can have that comparison discussion. But I don't know how many of you were here as part of that discussion in which you're like, no, we spent, for most of my communities, spent six months working on that and really vetting out what made sense.
Yeah, I, I mean, in my opinion, I definitely think with the, with our master plan that we just created, I mean, I would say the majority of the solar or especially the battery facility does not align with what we foresee the future of the community being. I would have to put some pretty strict regulation on it. I mean, I don't, I guess if I, like I said, going off of what we all just talked about, I definitely don't foresee the township moving towards that.
I would agree with you.
Well, we have wind and solar, we don't have storage. And, and based on our master plan, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, though, like the.
We can incorporate this, this storage, but as she said, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's intense to meet that criteria, and from what I've found out, it is too.
So, I'm working for another community that they are going to be one of the first to have this, so go me. And so, they're working through their text amendment, their meeting with me is next week. And so, that's when you have the University of Michigan, their expert is at that meeting as well that deals with battery facilities in this nature, so.
Pittsfield?
Uh, no, this is Groveland in Oakland County.
And they're, they're pro battery facility, they're trying to get.
No, they're, well, they're trying, they're walking the line, so you can exclusionary zone. You can't say, well, there's no appropriate location, there's no need for this. The state clearly pointed that out, so. What they're doing is they're trying, again, finding a workable ordinance that fits what an industry would not just say, well, this is ridiculous, but trying to make sure that they're maintaining good diligence of their community. So, do they have the fire apparatuses? Do they have the plan in place if something happens that everyone's going to be okay? Or minimize any damages? Are they doing the best to look out for the local neighbors and community and things of that nature? So, they're, they're walking that line of what makes sense. And so, what I would propose is that we get through that meeting with that client, I bring you their draft.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to share.
It's a sharing and caring game.
It is, you know, it is, because.
And so, that way, again, it's not, and we can, I think it's a much easier discussion than like our agro-business discussion, because it's a, here's what they have, here's why you have what they have. So, it's, in my opinion, I think it'll be a faster discussion. Some of the stuff, and they're similar in nature, in my opinion, on how they, their attitude towards planning is. So, I do think you're going to be relatively compatible. But that's what I would propose doing, is I would just push that amendment into it with minimal effort because we can borrow it from somebody else that's done a lot of their due diligence. And then you can, if you need to do something else with your solar or your wind, we can do that if you want me to do an actual analysis of it. But most communities know, we like what we have, or we are willing to make some tweaks to be more consistent with the state. Maybe not all the way there, but maybe closer.
Well, even when you get that, we can do a takeoff from there. I.
Yeah, to see what.
They're just focusing on their battery storage, I believe.
That's what I'm saying, right.
They're not evaluating their solar or wind.
Right, right.
I would argue that they're, they're not also obitable for wind. I don't know where they are with solar, but.
Gotcha.
I was trying to find some perspective. I Googled what it takes landwise to get 50 megawatts, 275 acres.
In a solar field.
Yeah, a solar field.
I mean, the city of Lapeers is about.
Not even, it's about 50.
Sorry, it's not, not just 50 acres.
Along I-69?
No, that's two projects, so it's 200 and something acres.
Okay.
Yep, because that's, that's the, so there's two properties in the city of Lapeers. So, there's the one that's, you can see off 69 that goes all the way to De Mill where the train tracks essentially are. And then there's another one that you can't see from 75 because of the topography that goes.
Larger.
That's even larger, that goes on both straddles of the creek, but then also goes all the way to the railroad for the most part.
I was curious one day and I measured it from Google Earth, and I remember 50 acres, just for that front one.
I think that might be accurate, but theirs is 200 and something. You just can't see as much from certain perspectives.
So, obvious concern with something of that size is visual, right? Solar battery to any ways, a large storage unit would be A, mainly a fire, and B, the cost of upgrading our service to be able to handle a fire of that size. But there's possibly money for that.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
The energy storage facility, any areas attract, as long as they have the power lines to handle it?
They do want to be near a transmission line, same thing with solar. Both usually want to be somewhat located nearby one. The battery storage facilities, the biggest concerns that they have walking into it is the fire safety, but also contamination. So, when a battery goes.
Containment, you're talking about.
No, just, well, so when, so if something were to happen, it's not just that it, you're waiting for the fire to go out, it's that you have chemicals that are being leached. And are they going into the groundwater supply where everyone has wells?
Containment, yes.
Yeah.
Well, we have up here in Richmond, there's a pumping station, and it's underwater, it's whatever it is, underground, I mean. It's a negative 200 degrees, well, if it breaches, they not, the pumping station has like concrete walls to control the.
Contamination.
Contamination, and to hold it in, because once it comes above ground, you're in trouble.
Yep.
So, that's what they're trying to navigate through from what I personally saw.
Correct, and so a lot of it goes back to, technology can help us do a lot of things.
Yes.
But are they required to do that as part of this project, or are we in good faith negotiating? So, that, that's what we're going to have to talk about is, what are we, and again, having our expertise collectively to make sure that you don't miss something like that, that that is a strategy to protect our groundwater supply. So, listing those out as options and saying they have to pick one, or another one that they provide on their own. Again, having that be a line item and say, this. Again, having that be a line item and say this needs to be addressed, that's a good thing.
How does the, like, the financial side of the, the, those projects work, like in Lapeer, so they have that solar, so obviously they're selling?
Um, so Lapeer is unique, um, because they are directly, the developer of that is DT Energy.
DT, yeah, right.
And it's on city property. Um, so the city is leasing pro- that land to DT for the solar energy, they're not getting um, otherwise.
So it's just the lease payment that the city is getting?
Correct, it is.
DT is harvesting, it's just like harvesting corn off leased property, same thing.
That's right, yep, same dynamic. So there isn't, I would say, otherwise a tax component associated with it. The only other thing that I think they did from an assess, assessing classifications, I don't think they kept agricultural. It's a conditional rezoning to B two. Um, so I think it did get a higher classification from a taxation standpoint. I couldn't tell you as an assessor if that is an option for some communities, cause it's improved land. How that works from a tax based question, but that, that's a case by case, community and assessor question.
So like the developer that would come in that would buy two hundred and seventy acres somewhere, they're basically buying the property. But as far as the, I mean, we're not, the, the community doesn't benefit at all other than.
Correct, there's, there's no, there's no local rate, most of these are actually lease agreements. Um, so they talk to a bunch of different farmers and it's just an alternative source of income for them. Um, to diversify, so it's more steady, it's not weather dependent, it doesn't require work, it, just look at it.
Okay, so what, uh, our best course of action, are you?
Table.
Looking, wait and see what comes up the storage facilities.
So I guess, so I guess the question for me would be, is, do we like what we currently have for wind and solar? If the answer is yes, and we don't need to compare what the state's doing, we're keeping what we have. Then I know we're just gonna put that, we're just gonna keep it as is, we'll go through our regular zoning ordinance update where we'll look at that later. But I'm not worried about that for November. Um, and then we would look at draft language then for this energy storage facility. So that would be a text amendment to include it, that way our bases are covered for this new use that I don't think you'd wanna process under a public utility. Cause it's just not sufficient to the level sophistication you want, um, that most communities want. So um, that would be one course of action, unless you do like the idea of exploring more of a Creo. Um, in which I would recommend you then have your municipal attorney as part of that, cause there are some legal components of that. That we need to follow your attorney's municipal advice, um, as opposed to navigating it without their advice. Um, this is something we wanna do right the first time, not find out six months later, oops.
So what is your expert opinion as to where we stand and, and what do you think that, as this township should do? With our ordinance that we have and to move forward, what's your opinion, what do you think?
Um, for most, I, I think you probably like what you have, and so I would just move forward with the option I just explained. Most communities, um, most communities, they like their workable ordinance, they put, they spend a lot of time when they initially put it together. Um, that's what they want. Um, they're, they aren't, and that's something we can, if a developer comes knocking and let's say we wanna cut our setbacks in half. We can have that discussion, but most communities, they put it that size for a reason. It was, it was not arbitrary, it was for purposes of protecting their community and the image of it.
I think it's our job to protect our community and that's what we admire when we wrote the ordinance.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
But will it stand against the, the Creo ordinance? I mean, we need to run that by our attorney, or you're gonna review and compare?
Well, so you don't have to do a Creo.
Okay.
Um, to keep our workable ordinance. So the legality components of that, we don't need to bring in your municipal attorney, um, because we're gonna say. Here, we're having a workable ordinance and this is the process to do so.
What would it take for you to put together the wind and solar?
Um, so I guess the first part would be just a quick comparison.
Whatever they come down with.
Um, will we, um, so I would say to do a quick comparison of the two.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking like two hours or something like that of my time, um.
I'm, I'm talking maybe present, once they get their act together and get everything organized for wind, solar and storage. The wind and solar, is it something we can get a copy of to just review it, compare to ours, is that a issue?
Well, we don't, we don't have the storage, that's what, there's, they're going through the storage, so we would just take a look at theirs and then see if it's something we would want to adapt or adjust.
I don't think so.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking wind and solar.
Really have.
Because, I know that.
But he's talking about evaluating it.
I'm talking comparing it, that, yes.
To theirs.
To the state.
Comparing the two, yes, is that gonna be a hardship for us?
I don't think.
For you to do?
Nope, especially if again, you're looking for a quick kind of, this is where you are, this is where they are. It's, it's this number, this number, this number, this number.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why we're.
The state is very cut and dry on what the requirement is.
That's what I want to know.
She, she's assuring us though, that we are much closer than the state, we'll just see how much.
We, yeah, this I might say, we are more stringent, cause we know we wanna be a little.
That's why I want to.
And then you don't, yeah.
Okay. Kind of keep to one conversation.
So that's why the whole Creo thing, I.
That's why I'm asking for the comparison, if that would be a hardship. We don't have to decide now, or am I not even comfortable?
I think you should start that, if you wanna see a comparison, we should start that now. It, you, we need our ducks in a row before November.
Yes.
Um, we don't have anyone to our knowledge knocking, is that more or less accurate, so?
No. Correct. So we should start now so that we are.
So you're, so you're okay, but again.
Yeah, but we're, we wanna be ready.
It starts November.
Yeah, we wanna be ready when and if somebody comes knocking.
What is the extent?
That we can say.
Who, like, what's the extent of the battery facility, are there multiple sides? Like, is it, is it fifty thousand square foot facility with, that requires so much property to house the batteries or, or is it? I kinda, I have no idea what a battery facility.
So it looks like a solar, it looks like a solar facility, except swap out a solar panel for a concrete foundation and then a.
Oh, but there's multiple, it's not one.
Six, seven foot, um, white structures that just sit on it. If you want, I can.
There's not as much, as many as a smaller.
It's just a parapet wall that goes around the facility, patrol.
Well, so it's electric, so they only have to meet electrical compliance, so a lot of them are chain link fences. Um, unless you do screening or something like that, same thing, argument with solar, it, it's functions.
But there are multiple small structures, it's not a big fifty thousand, okay.
Correct.
I wasn't sure if it was a single facility on like twenty acres or if it's a hundred acres of all these tiny battery packs.
Yep, so there is a bunch of different battery packs with a, a few um, transmission buildings or things of that nature, um.
We do have a transmission line, right? So that would be, that, that's something we should look at, you said you're doing it for Groveland Township? So I think that's something we should look at here, if, if we have, we do have one.
You might switch gears.
So, we're all, we're all in agreement that we'd like to see the.
So my fall pictures with my grandkids, I'm not, we're not there anymore.
Storage ordinance. Yeah.
So there's.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I'll send you a YouTube of the, about a battery storage facility with fires in San Diego right now from this year, from May. Um, it's a video of the fires in a battery storage facility, similar. It's a major hazardous material concern and, and the hazardous material, cause lithium, it is, it's definitely.
That would be beneficial for everybody to see, cause I've seen some stuff about it and it's pretty scary.
Okay, so.
I send it, we could probably wanna see, cause it's pretty scary.
We will have to definitely bolster our fire department with that.
Yeah.
And emergency preparedness involving the county.
They're already certified.
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
They're already certified.
For lithium.
That could be a, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and.
As needed.
Hazmat.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they do a lot with hazmat, our department.
Of the wind and, okay, so, so you understand, um, if you have her do the comparison of the current. Um, wind and solar, our current ordinances with the state ordinances, that is an as needed charge.
That's was my next question.
Yes.
Unless, unless you wait and we do it as part of our overall zoning ordinance, um, review.
Well, that's my question to Kate.
If you pull that out and have her do it now.
Oh, no, not now.
Okay.
When it's, yeah, when it comes to this ordinance, can, uh, do we have to be going in the order that, or can we do these as, on a need basis without getting into additional costs?
Um.
You know, maybe you were gonna work on, you know, parking.
So the biggest thing is effective date, um, is for the ordinance. So for doing the zoning ordinance update project, um, we're going through the entire thing and then at the end saying. Here it is, public hearing, adoption, there we go, um, when.
May I, may I cut you off?
Sure.
And the reason why I said that is because we already have it in place, and that's why, I guess maybe I spoke wrong. Um, you do it at your leisure, you know, cause worst case scenario, we have wind and solar already to fall back on. That's why I, I didn't mean to go right now and do it, uh.
We should do it before November.
Did that help you?
Oh, so you can neither, again, so it goes back to, so if we would do this analysis as part of your comprehensive zoning update.
Okay.
Because either way, it's best practice to make sure that, again, you go through those regulations, I make sure you understand, like, so this is out. Instead of it saying, well, this is the state, this is you, it would be more of a, so this is out of the norm. Um, from this as a workable ordinance, as opposed to what the state, well, kind of as part of that conversation. Um, but the biggest thing is, is its timing. So yes, we could do the uses analysis together earlier on and add them, my substitute while I'm gone on maternity leave. He is fully capable of having those discussions and taking that with you. But we would not be taking just the use section saying, aha, now we will adopt it. Because it's the cart before the horse, cause all those use requirements, we may move stuff out of there and put it in parking. I may put it in the site plane review stuff, everything is very intertwined when you do that comprehensive update. That it, it causes more rework that is not part of that original scope. To do two public hearings, to do two notices, to do two procedurals.
But if we're just doing the review out of order, we're okay, we're not getting to additional costs. If we're just, like I say, just light review of the ordinance, but we're not going to public hearing and adopting it and making the changes at that point.
Correct.
We just, we just like to know when it gets in the extra cost.
Sure.
Stay within the retainer, stay, you know, and, and as, you know, far, I was surprised when we saw that on the, on the farm, that it was additional charge. Cause it's, I thought you were going through the whole ordinance, so.
So we are going through the whole ordinance, but it's, it's a duplication of what we'd be doing. So there are certain components of there that I mentioned, I would recommend removing. Um, so specifically the site plane review lesser standards, that's something that should be in your site plane review standards. That ultimately multiple applications could apply for, not just this use. Um, and so, and then there's other parking requirements and the gravel that you currently have and copy and paste in six different sections. That should all just be in your parking, um, so it's in one spot and you're treating everyone similarly that could qualify. So part of, so it's that intertwinedness, again, it's the duplication of this type of draft in this way, um, standalone. As opposed to when we do the comprehensive update, I'm not pulling something out separate. Every, every article's being reviewed in this format, not a different format.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to put it on your plate to see what's the best way to address it, I guess.
So if you want something before November, that wouldn't, that would not be something we would be able to do within the zoning ordinance update process. If you are okay with saying we're gonna do the workable ordinance and then just not really have anything for battery storage and wait to someone to knock. We know our answer and then we would just wait to do that.
November's not a hard date, cause we don't have anything before us.
Right, and that's.
It's just when the law comes into.
And that's what I was gonna, so basically that's what we're trying to as, achieve is like, we don't have anything as far as storage facilities. And so come November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, that is when that goes into effect where our ordinances, we don't have anything regarding it. So we're trying to get something put in place so that before that goes live, or whatever you wanna call it.
Right.
So as long as we have it done before our November meeting.
Exactly, that would, but no matter.
But if it was December or January, would it matter?
Yeah, right, cause nobody's knocking.
Cause if there's no site before us.
Yeah, if you don't have someone knocking, you don't need the regulation.
Right, but.
But if someone knocks, you really want the regulation.
Just rolling the dice.
Could you?
And I don't know, some operators, to be honest, they're very patient people, um, they're thinking three years out anyway. So if we say we need to do a moratorium on the storage energy, we're working on a workable ordinance. Um, some are willing to have that discussion, others you may have someone argue with you that you have a public utility and that's what I'm processing. Or that's what I should be under, and that, that's my concern, is though it is a special land use, there's a lot we can pull into it. We just have to be mindful, um, when we're doing that, because it's a lot.
So realistically, we're, we have to wait, I mean, you're, you're going through the same process with the other community. So you, we can start gathering the information that you go through with them as far as the, the storage facilities. And then we would be able to make a better, adapt a better overall picture of what we want, based on what they're finding to. I, yeah, I mean, yeah, as long as we agree with it, I mean, there's nothing that we would add to it, but yeah.
So it's, it sounds like we're wanting to see the energy storage facility ordinance that you're working on.
Yeah, table, yeah. Yep.
And then, and just a light review of our current, we only have this one section that deals with large systems. It's only several paragraphs on our, uh, solar.
Yeah.
So that, that's something that you could review and see if it was, if it was a workable ordinance, basically. And that would be within the normal working of the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, so the actions we wanted, we want a table for, um, to receive the energy storage.
Facility.
Ordinance that, I mean, currently worked on in another community and, uh, review of our current solar ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, make the motion.
Okay, so Joe, so the, the motion is to table to receive those two items, um.
We're in choosing the second option, right, that's what we're doing, we're adopting a workable.
Yep.
Right, we're gonna review ours and then, and then see what the ordinance is on the energy storage facility.
Was there a second on Joe's?
There is not a second yet, so.
Oh, okay.
Is that Beth?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Joe, Jeff, and, okay, any other discussion on the motion to table for those items to come? Okay, all in favor say ayes.
Aye.
All opposed, what's your carries? All right, so we'll see that most likely, okay, next one. All right, so that one goes there. And that brings us to the, um, update that was requested on the Ag and SAA zoning ordinance. Um, we just kinda looked at this a little bit briefly last month.
And you should have draft two, that's on the top right corner. So based on the minutes, um, in talking with Chris at the meeting last month, I did make some modifications to the draft, um.
Okay, draft two.
Just to make sure that, again, you kind of made some decisions and so I fixed that, so then it was consistent with your, those decisions. Um, other things, again, the cover letter should look almost the exact same, cause it almost is, so, um, that's that.
Now redo it.
Okay.
But, um, do you wanna go ahead and, and go through with your review?
Sure, and does it work to talk about the uses first and then to talk about the definitions? Or was it, I guess it seemed like we were grappling with a few things last time, that if, I guess I always start top to ba- or article one and go down. Um, that's just systematically how I do it, but if you guys were having more struggle with definitions, then maybe it makes sense to start there. Cause one of the biggest things is, um, that I think we're grappling with is to what use extent are we talking about? Um, and that goes to your definition.
Well, I think that the issue that came up was under all the, at the four SAA, um, uses. Was that, um, they were very specifically drafted up for a very sp- specific activity. And then when they were, um, tried to apply towards another use, um, they weren't as easy to use for a different type of use.
Right.
So that, there was some, and I think there was, um, some definition problem as far as, um, how things were defined or not defined. And that was kind of the biggest issue, so how you wanna attack that is.
I'm asking for your pleasure, you already looked at it last week, uh, or last month, I assumed you did your homework. So would you like to talk about the definitions first? That seemed to be where people.
That's great.
Definitions is fine, yes.
Okay, so that is page three of the memo or letter. And that's page eight of ten. Um, so one of the first things that I bolted is adding of adjunct food services. So I understand when I initially put that term out there, it seemed like there was a little bit of confusion. The idea is, is that with this adjunct food services, you're not cooking it live. This is not a restaurant served to order, you're not making burgers or pizzas. Um, you can have prepackaged peanuts, jacuzzi boards, if you've been to wineries and stuff, sometimes they offer like peanuts. And other smaller, um, preprocessed things, uh, things that are not cooked there. You can have stuff that is heated up, so like your hot dog roller, again, that's already technically precooked. Um, and you're just, um, heating it up or keeping it at the temperature. Donuts are made and then they're put on the shelf and you're picking out what donuts you put in your box. Um, so that's the idea behind this adjunct food services. And it makes a clear definition change between a restaurant and having some level of food accommodations on site. That you may or may not want in an agricultural situation. And again, it's different because it's not requiring it to be developed on site. Um, so the apples do not need to be made on site, but they, could they be pre-made apples locally that are dipped in caramel? And then put in a container or put on the counter to pick out?
Or put in front of me.
That's fine. Um, so just kind of clarifying that there's a big difference between that. Um, so hopefully that additional context helped understand that term. And if it's helpful, we can always add those examples to that, so that's kind of what I did at the end was add. Or prepackaged products such as jacuzzi boards, peanuts, crackers and cheese trays, et cetera. Um, to help beefen up, make it so then the most common person can understand that definition. Does that help clarify that term? Do we like the idea that that's something that makes sense for agricultural tourism? Or when it's in an agriculture district, that's what we're going for, unless you're a full-service restaurant, which is its own use.
I'm not crazy about the sound of it, because it's, it's not obvious, but I think it does, we do need a definition.
If you have another word, I'm happy to use it. You can think about it too, um, so you have until the public hearing to change it. Um, but, um, again, that's why definitions are important, we're trying to put those different terms specific to it. Um, so if everyone likes, understands that better, the next one I pointed out was modification of your small-scale entertainment definition. Um, and so in draft two, it reflects the removal of the definition since you've incorporated it in your design standards. That seemed to be, um, something that you talked about your last one. The other thing is a duplication of terms, so there's ancillary and accessory use. Um, it's best to have one term as opposed to two terms. And so, um, I consolidated it into accessory uses, because it seemed, based on that meeting, you kind of were like, oh, that is the same thing. And so I changed it in your draft, wherever it, and this, um, ancillary was, it's now accessory use. Again, keeping consistent terminology. Um, so if that's okay, that's the other definition clarification that we made.
So, before we get too far along, the, modify the small-scale entertainment.
Okay.
Now, you're saying you remove that, that's, you've removed that from the small.
Just the definitions section, so it is still in the design standards. And how, how we classify it is that threshold of number of people are attending.
So you're saying the definitions in our current ordinance? Or where, where are you saying you're removing?
So I removed it, I'm proposing we would remove it from your definitions article. Because you're just gonna put it in your design. If you're gonna put a number on something, let's put it one spot, don't put it two spots, you'll forget about one of them.
So it's currently in our definitions in the ordinance to say not have it there?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because we, I remember we put that in there because we needed a definition, but you, you wanna have it in?
So it's under your design standards, what, what that threshold is, it's literally the two hundred people. Um, and so though we do want every use to have a definition, we want it to have a common sense identity. That doesn't mean you need to have a definition for everything in your definitions article. So everyone knows what a barber shop is, you don't need that defined. Um, we only need terms defined that we need to be unique. Um, so when we get to the use discussion, I'll add like personal service establishments. That's your barber shops, your tattoo parlors, it's any service where you come in, do something and you leave. Um, it's that service-based industry to have an umbrella term as opposed to a barber shop, a tattoo parlor, a nail salon. Which is different than a beauty salon, like.
But it looks like you, you took, you took it out of the definitions, but you also took it out of the, um, the acceptable uses. So I'm not sure where we're going. It looks like, it, it is F under our current ag, ag, uh, biz, agribusiness. And I see it's removed here, but then you're saying you also want to remove it out of the definition.
Um, so what we did is, based on your commentary, um, from the last meeting, is we pulled it out as a totally separate use. Which I think I put as sixteen forty. Where you have your outdoor venues.
I was gonna say, I didn't see a small-scale entertainment.
Yeah, because we.
Oh, so what I did was, is you have, uh, special land use approvals, there's event barns. So that's what's pulled out separate, and that's where you have the two hundred person capacity, so that's on page four of ten. Um, and so pulling that out to be separate, um, as opposed to under the, because again, when we were talking about the small-scale entertainment. I mean, you, you're, you're talking about an event barn, um, so it's trying to take all these different terms that are kind of trying to be the same thing to one term.
I, I don't know that small-scale entertainment is an event barn, though.
I don't know how it's not, because the only definition difference is it's two hundred people. If it's anything more than two, two hundred people, it's an event hosting facility. And it has to then meet sixteen thirty-nine.
In the discussion last month, you were talking about you didn't want event barns under the acceptable ancillary uses. You wanted it as a special land use.
Right.
So that's why she put it under special land uses.
And we can get to that in a, in a moment, too. So it's not set in stone, but I, we want, you don't need to have a definition for every single use, as long as you go to that use and you understand where it applies. It doesn't have to just be in your definition section.
Okay.
Um, so it sounds like we'll come back to the small-scale event barn discussion, that okay with everyone?
Great.
Okay. Um, so back to next one, which was the temporary uses or buildings. Um, and so keep in mind, um, your definition currently, um, looking at temporary is, um, not to exceed three days. Uh, and so, um, when you talk about putting tents, um, tents are more or less temporary. Um, are we making them pull those up and down in three days? Um, so part of it is, is you can modify your definition.
What, what, where are you at?
Um, so page ten is where you have temporary uses and buildings.
Yeah.
This is crazy, it is, it, there's just gotta be an easier way.
I feel like we could just start the front and go through them, because we're jumping all over the place.
Well, the definitions is all right here, within these two pages. Um.
Okay.
And we're almost done, um, this is the la- second to last one on this one. Um, so the biggest thing is, is I wanna check when we say temporary buildings are not allowed. That we understand that that does mean tents. And things of that nature.
That's what you're trying to tell us, a tent is a building then?
That's a fix to the ground.
So it's temporary, yep, so it has a, it's a column that supports a roof.
Yeah.
So.
So.
Let me see if I understand this, so recently Blake's had their lavender festival two weekends in a row and they have tents and everything set up.
Yep.
Okay, so now Miller wants to do that, whatever, you guys want to, so now these tents go up Friday morning, come down Friday night, go up Saturday, come down Saturday night.
Well, they can be up for three days, and so, um.
So they couldn't stand the week, they couldn't span to, from one weekend to the next.
From one weekend to the next, it's from Friday to Sunday, basically, or whatever.
So in a general sense, this is extremely, um.
Limited.
Limited, um, most of my communities, when you're talking about temporary, you're looking at something for thirty days or sixty days. So again, you're a fireworks tent that's up for a period of time, you're looking at, um, some communities, they say it's more of a ninety-day thing. Because they understand it being up for the summer or a portion of the summer. But again, you wanna keep away from temporary buildings and, um, uses. They have more wear and tear and the maintenance associated with it. So you wanna keep away from the blight problem, because a blight enforcement is a lot more involved process. Um, as opposed to temporary buildings and saying, okay, you got sixty days, this is when we approve that sixty days. Is it down in sixty days later? And that's something that I would say generally the township probably has capacity to man every three days. I don't know that you do, um, so.
No, and it's just a pain in the neck for the business owners, the, I mean, the enforcement, the, you know, everything, and it's just.
And I don't think you're currently living up to that right now.
No.
Um, so I would propose you change three days to a different number.
Add a zero.
I like, I like sixty days. Si- at least sixty.
Thirty, if you're talking fireworks tent, you know, June first.
It could be a, it, it should be a season.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole season.
Or you can just eliminate a period.
Uh, no, I'm gonna make you have a temporary use or building definition, but.
Say that again, I beg your.
You have to have that as a use definition, um, because again, you do have things that are temporary in nature. Um, and you, I strongly recommend you do regulate them to some capacity.
Right, you said that, because it was allowing it to happen and the wear and tear and people will just leave it there.
And again, if you don't have a use that says temporary uses, then you don't allow them, so, so now we're in a pickle, um.
I vote sixty days.
So I heard a sixty, I heard a thirty and I heard a ninety.
Forty-five.
Like a ninety day, because if you're gonna, you're, you're gonna have different, um, plants to sell and produce. And bring it on through your what?
October.
At, at least May, June, July, I don't know, and then you gotta take it down and put it back up for pumpkins and squash and all that, I.
What if you get it re-inspected and have it? Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, is there a way that you could just, you, say you meet the thirty-day threshold, sixty-day threshold? Could you come back and say, can I get approval for an additional, you know, and then do increments of thirty days or something?
Okay.
Um, so I haven't looked at your use requirements for temporary uses. Some communities do bar more than one or two submittals, but you don't have to. Um, so I can't fully answer that, but you could certainly operate that way if you would like to.
I mean, I feel like if you put a sixty day on it, that kind of meets in the middle, but then you could always additional, you know, you're gonna add additional.
I could say, you know, can I, can I come back and ask for another thirty days or whatever?
Public reasons is not an issue.
Can we take the, uh, the time that this thing exists out of the definition and put it in the ordinance book? Doesn't that make sense?
Um, so it's already in your ordinance?
Well, your, this temporary use on the back page becomes, it's under the heading here of article twenty definition.
Yeah.
The, I guess, what he's saying is, we, we're defining tents as a building, but why is the timeframe within the definition? Shouldn't the timeframe be just in the ordinance, not the definition of a tent or a building? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, what, what?
Because we need something that clarifies what's the difference between temporary and permanent. So sometimes it's the matter of the building having foundation or not foundation. Um, I don't think you guys wanna go down that route, so.
My mind's winding off, it's like, okay, someone's building a house that takes six months, are they okay to park a RV next to that building being built and, and live there?
Um, so that's a different regulatory problem.
But I heard that you're not, I heard that our ordinance is still allow that, but I.
And so, a temporary use or building, a temporary building might be in this ordinance and it might be in that ordinance. So leave out the time period and leave, and put the time periods in the ordinance.
So you can always put, so in the scenario of, um, a temporary use such as an emergency housing for a fire or something of that nature. You can put in there requirements associated when it's a single-family home that's been destroyed. They can have a temporary dwelling unit such as an RV on property for, you can say three hundred days, two years. Um, and it's, wouldn't be, when there's conflicting regulation, you clearly wrote it in a way that you're not saying, oh, well, in definitions, we said it could only be this day. We could still, we clearly made this other use category that defined it differently, it's not just a temporary use.
That's why.
It's a temporary dwelling for emergency purposes, so it's a different use. In that scenario. I do recommend having some level of clarity, what's the difference between a permanent building and a temporary? So you can take out the dates if you want, um, and then you simply would just put like foundation or something of that nature.
But foundation isn't going to always be.
No.
No, it's not.
I, I mean, we, we put up burns all the time with no foundation.
Correct, yep, so that has its own problem, um.
What if we said month, like from May to October or end of October, something like that?
Uh, so if you do it for a period of time, it's easier to measure, because this is a very broad category.
Yeah, this.
But because you could work.
This is meant to be, again, your fireworks tent, if somebody wanted to have a tent where they're selling, um, Christmas trees.
Christmas trees.
That they aren't grown on site or things of that nature. Like, so, so I recommend some type of number threshold, that way it is easier, um, to have. And again, we, during the whole zoning ordinance update, we can look into, does the temporary uses function how we want it to function? Um, there's a few other things that I would recommend modification to it, that's more of a newer trend. Um, but I think for our purposes in this Ag ordinance, I think taking out that timer is helpful.
The biggest thing to me is you, we have, we want to enable the people who are putting up a temporary, you know, tent or building for the right reasons. Selling fireworks, selling produce, those kind of things, to be able to operate like they should. But we're trying to eliminate people from putting up, uh, some random tent for to park their whatever under and just creating blight in the township. That's what we're essentially trying to do.
Yep. And I don't know, the other, only other minor thing would be is I don't know if you still want that to be reviewed by the clerk. Um, usually it's the zoning administrator and the building inspector, um, so that's the only other.
Yeah, I didn't know, I, I thought it was odd that it said clerk.
It is odd, but not uncommon, you find you in job, in a lot of jobs that you didn't think you were in charge of.
Is, is a storage container, like a shipping container, considered a tent?
Um, so as part of this definition, then it goes back to, again, your period of time, not as much the structure component.
I'm just, like, just to try to limit, if people are, were obviously worried about blight, but I could see somebody, I mean, that's not a permanent fixture or a permanent structure, because they could move it around. So they could just park it on their property, move it.
It goes then to intent, yes, so, um, so just like a pole barn, so if they're treating it like a pole barn, this is where my shipping container is going.
Okay. Just trying to make sure.
If they meet the accessory building requirements associated with it, that's how you would interpret that shipping container.
And Mel's pretty.
Those are. Yeah, Mel's pretty strict on that, and we require a shipping container to be put on a, um, a foundation.
Foundation of some sort.
It's a separate ordinance for that.
Mm-hmm.
It's an accessory building.
Yeah, that, that. Inductive to the.
Yep. So I'm gonna write in sixty days then, and the clerk is no longer in charge of this action item.
Right.
I, I got a question, since you brought it up, where, how do you relate blight to a tent? We're talking about the tent, where did the blight come from?
John Smith Company put up a tent in February first and it's still there following February, and nothing's being done with it, he's not selling any.
Just collecting, it's just collecting junk.
Oh, yeah.
Sold, they're like ripped.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's just a.
It's getting ripped apart by the wind and the elements.
Yeah, that's.
That's what we're trying to eliminate.
Correct, so it's a bad actor provision.
That's what it is, alright, I got you.
Um, so the other thing, the last definition term that I just wanted to check, we're all on the same, um, boat on, is that the term, um, gross tax annual farming related. Is defined but not directly used in the farming operations. Um, so I didn't know if that was something that, um, some communities use that as a metric for bona fide farm verification. Um, when you have these other agro-tourism activities on site and things of that nature. Um, it's something you could consider adding, especially to those more intense operations like the year-round kitchens. Again, if you're trying to make sure it's truly accessory to in the legitimate farm operation, using that term in there may be helpful. So I just flagged it.
Is this the gross annual income farming related, that one, okay.
Correct. Yep, so it's looking at the course of two of the three years immediately preceding the current year, that you have the agricultural, um, commodities. Yep, so it's looking at the course of two of the three years immediately preceding the current year, that you have the agricultural, um, commodities. Again, giving bona fide operations, you can now do these other things. As opposed to somebody that has the intent to eventually do those things. We also don't have to, but more food for thought, I don't propose any changes to it, I just wanted to make sure you realize that that was a definition you had in this document. Um, so that's all my definitions. Um, so now I would propose to start back at page one.
Page one of your letter?
Uh, page one of my letter and then page one of ten of draft two.
Draft two.
Alright, so, um, I tried to be simplistic with, again, doing some different changes associating with the original text, so when you see crossed out, that's proposed removal. Um, highlighted is more of like a potential change and things of that nature, um, and so I made some recommended changes, um, throughout that different section. Um, I would say, in your draft two, based on your deliberation last time, I kept the site plan standards maintained, it seemed like that generally was your consensus, do you like kind of how it operates now? Um, and so I kept that there, um, as far as, um, the small scale entertainment draft shoot two shows this as a separate event barn special land use. Under the agricultural zoning districts, which is under section eight oh two. I provided the same language that was provided in draft one, um, with some minor modifications, so I lied, we're not seeing on page one, um.
Yeah, that's in the back.
I have a.
It's on page four.
A question on page one.
Okay.
Uh, section eight oh one B, I'm, I'm trying to figure this one out.
Okay.
Um, the kitchen facilities, this would require kitchen facilities to only operate eight months out of the year, is that a carryover from our own ordinance? Or did we just?
This is currently, so you're looking at page two I?
Um, no, I'm, well, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the ordinance itself.
Yep, so this is an original from yours, um, and so that's something that you can already have, no proposed changes.
Alright, I got a question on page one.
Why do we wanna limit it, is that what you're wondering, why don't we just let them, if they have a kitchen facility there, why don't we just let them operate?
So that's a philosophy question, there's no, there's no right or wrong, um, so the biggest thing is why you would limit it? Is because you're trying to separate yourselves from a bona fide restaurant. So if you just allow kitchen facilities that can do all these different things, why do you have a separate restaurant provision? As opposed to these, um, this kitchen facility that does the sale of cider, this is a seasonal operation. You're, it, it's a accessory to an actual bona fide farm operation because it's seasonal, um.
Plus it'd be a different license, food handlers.
Um, yes, there are some different other, either way, if, by being a commercial grade kitchen, you'd still need the health department and things in that nature involved. Correct, but from a use, uh, this really goes to a use thing, um, this goes back to the intensity of the use and how long they can operate.
Commercial kitchen, yes.
The intention behind the eight is that typically, probably during the winter season, you don't have anything to offer. Um, again, keeping away from your bona fide restaurant. But if you wanna allow bona fide restaurants to be anywhere in our ag district, we can write the language to do so, just understand the, the door you're opening.
Well.
I would like a restaurant in the ag district that can operate twelve months.
Right.
You do, correct, but why would we have, why do you have this lesser one that's, I guess, again, we're trying to provide clarification.
Right, and that's, I need clarification, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is, is what we have now, is that basic, what's happening now, is that allowed?
So you can do, so you can do kitchen facilities for eight months anywhere in our ag, presuming you go through these requirements.
What's happening?
The, the biggest thing that you can't have a bona fide kitchen is because you have to be rezoned to the overlay SAA. And you have to have a lot of other stipulations which are very tailored, which we are, that's the reason we're kicking this off, is because it's not just for alcoholic beverages. That, that was that person, um, we're looking at him, taking a step back, what makes sense for our community.
Okay, so the overlay dis- I'm sorry, Jeff, the overlay district allows for twelve months?
No, go ahead.
Yes.
So anyone that has an overlay district can have a kitchen running for twelve months out of the year, I need to clarify that in my head, but that's, because this is.
Correct.
So to me, like, I guess that's what this, the eight months is actually more or less to, so, you, you are SAA.
Twelve months.
You can operate twelve months, but if you, this is basically to protect the farmers, cause if you wanted to come in and start a restaurant and just say, well, I bought this farm, now I can still, and.
Well.
Operate a kitchen, you know, like, you could do an agribusiness and then operate a restaurant without going through all of those other, you know, rezoning, right, like you're, I don't know how to say it.
Yep, the rezoning, that's fair, yep.
Yeah, so it's basically like a way to p- protect people and for, forcing them to go.
It's a simpler process for a less intense operation.
Yes, exactly.
It's just meant to be a seasonal operation.
Yep.
Meant to be seasonal, it's not supposed, if they want to help operate twelve months, then they just go to the full SAA and then all of it is open to them.
Right, so, like Jeff, Jeff, he can operate.
You could, Jeff can operate twelve months out of the year.
Or they go to a restaurant and.
Yes, yes.
Caitlin, so is that Jeff can operate a kitchen twelve months out of the year?
Cause he's in the SAA.
Well, so he hasn't gotten all the official approvals for all those things. So he has gone the rezoning for SAA, but has not received the approval for the, uh, full service restaurant component, which.
Right.
We put on postponement because we're working on this, so it isn't super tailored.
But is that fair to him, I mean, he went.
Wait, and this is, now we're getting off tangent, or we need to focus on the, the use language.
No, because if we change something, that's not, that, we're not getting off focus, we need to take care of what we have already approved. And we can't change it because he hasn't gotten an SLA because we told him not to.
No, we're waiting for a site plan.
Right.
They're gonna have a.
But if, if, if he goes and gets a site plan, how is that gonna work, and we're still working on an ordinance? We, are we gonna send him back and say, no, you have to, this isn't our ordinance?
So I think the first time you, I wasn't here when you had these first discussions, but when you focused it on one person, you forgot about the wider picture. So that's why I wanna encourage us not to just focus on this person or this person, we need to take a step back and say, do you want kitchen facilities to be on a seasonal basis? And allowed in our entire ag district? If the answer is yes, then it can stay as is and we can have a larger discussion then, if we do want to allow our larger scale full service restaurants. What does that mean, cause the biggest thing with these commercial kitchens is it has to be related to something they're doing on site. You have to grow the apples and you, and you have to produce the apples, then you can have it there.
But according to GAMS, it, I mean, GAMS is only fifty percent, and you can bring stuff in, up, lease land from somewhere else, like if Jeff leased some land and nobody.
That's what this is.
Yeah, so for a farmer's market, correct, there are different thresholds and things of that nature, correct.
Yeah.
Loc- I thought we said locally purchased or locally grown.
So again, we're not at that portion in our, um, so the biggest thing is, is that you make sure that these are accessory to the farm operation that's on hand.
Yeah, we're not.
Um, and then these are, um, specifically, again, if you look on page one, um, go down to two, the bullets, and then A, agricultural products. Grown on site, that, like a farmer's market, greenhouse, again, fifty percent grown by the operator, so, so again, we're, that is that number that would tie into your kitchen facility. Same thing with bakery. Again, fifty percent are grown by the operator.
Right, but. But GAMS says fifty percent.
That is their definition.
Yeah, so we can't say.
We don't recommend you change that, you can make it more generous if you wanted, so you could make it twenty percent, um.
Right.
You just can't make it fifty-two percent and then have to come back.
Right.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Right, okay.
See, I thought we can't change theirs according to.
We can't change what the GAMS, yeah, you can't change what the state is, but locally, we could make it less, you can exceed what the state.
I talked to the guy.
Can't be stricter.
They said no.
Well, not to qualify for GAMS.
For that, for our ordinance, we can just not be stricter, but you can be less.
So they could follow.
They said no, they want, these are the guidelines we set forth and you have to abide by it.
If they're going.
Unless, unless I heard him wrong.
If they're working under GAMS.
Right, for GAMS.
Yes.
It's their choice, to work under GAMS, then, right, or they can work under our ordinance, or they can work under.
Correct.
So they don't.
Their choice. You're right.
Right.
When, but, but when you're under GAMS, you're, you're set into a certain set of parameters, for lack of a better word.
There are some things that are preempted, correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, that's the way I.
As long as you meet their definition and things, there are certain things, but if we were to say, we are gonna allow for cider mills. It has to be twenty percent can be grown on site for you to be a cider mill, um.
Oh, I see where you can step it down.
You can step it down, do they get the state GAMS protections?
That's different.
No, but our local ordinance says, well, this is the rules you play by if it's lesser.
No. That's right, yeah.
Um, so, so again, I do, um, I do understand, it's easier to understand, um, specific people and projects, but at the same time, I.
You need to look at the picture.
I'm looking at what you've complained about in the past, and I'm like, it's a use question, do, do you wanna have kitchen facilities that are accessory to farms that are seasonal? Or if they're gonna go to this next threshold, are you a different category? That's, that's the biggest fundamental question, so far, your general answer has been yes, if it's not seasonal, we really want you to then be in a different category with a different set of rules.
Which makes sense, I mean, if it's seasonal, then they should have this, it should be less stringent, if they wanna be a full-out kitchen, then they need to have more regulation, because then you're gonna take away opportunity from other smaller operations that would never be able to succeed.
Correct. Plus, when you go into, into that, you've got OSHA that comes in and all the others that inspect it. Even more stringent than anyways.
Yep, and so, so, so the biggest thing with those, um, and that's going to the second bullet here, other than the, um, or the one, two, three, four on my memo, um. Where you talk about kitchen facilities, so the one that operates for eight months versus the one that's a full-on restaurant, so. I think it would help if you clarified, again, is this something that the kitchen facilities is that ancillary adjunct food services? Again, the prepackaged stuff, it's, I already pre-made the candy apples and then you can, that I, again, fifty percent of that market situation, you got from somewhere else or locally or something of that nature. Um, I think that helps that situation, um, because otherwise, just saying a kitchen, so I can cook things. Um, and I, I think you can, you can go two different ways with that interpretation, and I think at this point, let's clarify what we want.
Okay, so we agree that we need some clarification on the kitchen versus restaurant.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that may, may very well be that, where I can't see.
Adjunct, adjunct food services.
But we got other names for that, if you wanna change that, like supplement, addition.
So that's where we would put that, uh, you'd put it right here in.
Yep, so I see kitchen facilities along with the sale of these different things, and again, it says kitchen facilities do not include a restaurant. Um, and you would simply say, but it would include adjunct food services, again, clarifica- so what is a restaurant, it's cooked to serve? But at what point is popcorn cooked to serve?
It was like Papa Joe's, my daughter's had surgery, I went to the deli to get her sandwiches, so she had food to eat, not hospital food. And there was like a Papa Joe's where I could buy salads that were pre-made and pre-made sandwiches and.
Yep. Exactly, you're okay with, again, having some of those, again, they can use their kitchen, they can prepackage things, again, not made to serve, um.
Not a, not a.
So I can't go up and say I wanted ham and cheese, yeah.
Not made to order, how's that, it's not made to order.
Yes, yes.
So, does that sound consistent, again, like if you're at a cider mill and you wanna have your donuts made on site, or your candy apples that are grown in the local fields? But then you also wanna offer up some corn dogs? Or popcorn, it's not uncommon.
Okay, so we, we agree that we could have another sentence with kitchen facilities to explain.
Yeah.
Adjunct services, yep, okay. Alright, so we did that one.
Which, which brings me to, um, as we're going through this, you've got a lot, like grown on site, grown by operator, all highlighted in yellow, what is, what is that?
So, one of the things I wanna make, again, this is purposeful consistency.
Which one is that?
One and ten, then, page two, draft two.
Sorry.
Page one, it's highlighting, it's not any different than what we have right now, so I just.
And draft two, page.
Correct, so I didn't change it, um, but one of the things you talked about when you talked about the, and the, and this again, it wasn't part of your, I didn't re-watch your meeting, uh, recorded, but, um, looking at the minutes. When you had your manufactured food services, you guys were like, well, we don't think it should have to be grown on site, um, and so I wanted to just have a quick moment to be like. Do we want consistent language throughout our ag purposes, is it by the owner, is it on site? Um, it makes it simpler for using the same term over and over again, rather than, well, if you're this, well, then you're grown by the operator, if you're this, you have to be grown on site. Um.
By the operator is better, cause they can use leased land, right, in the case they're already maxed out, so you know that wording is better.
Right.
Uh.
That's what I think, I mean, if you have twenty acres here and you've got five here and five in that town, but whatever.
As long.
Wanna grow some more, supplement your food.
Yeah, I mean.
Correct, but it wouldn't count towards your minimum si- site requirements, so you could have more property, again, providing the products.
Maybe your product is hot.
Um, but you still need the ten.
Right.
On a su- this subject property.
To do the.
To do the agro business.
Right.
Ancillary.
Yeah.
Sense, and, and that was part of the thing, is it is a farm and it's, you know, you are growing something on site, and it's all part of the whole ancillary nature. It's not just a building somewhere where everything's grown someplace else and you're growing this building, this building.
Right, it's not a farm, corner farm stand, it's.
Cause I think when you look at the minimum site requirements under C one, the, the proposed farming operation to provide fifty percent of the farm product does not require this additional space. And that's talking about your ten acres, so to me, in a very strict reading.
I'm sorry, I, but where were you reading?
I'm on page two, um, three, C.
Okay.
Minimum site requirements.
So the ten acres have to produce the fifty percent farm product.
I think that should be reduced.
So that, so, I, I, and I'm saying, that there's, isn't maybe what we meant, but in a very strict application, I go to the, okay, you need ten acres. The proposed farm operation has to provide fifty percent of the farm product and does not require this additional space. So this space is the required space.
That's confusing.
So, so it's a minimum of ten acres.
So I guess the question is, is, again, easy enough, uh, simpler put, do you want it to be on site? Or is it by the operator, cause I think we can, if you clarify that point, I will clarify it everywhere else.
In my mind, I wanna say by the operator, cause.
I think by the operator has to be.
Because if you've got ten acres that you've got to do your SAA, what, you know, and you, you've only got so much room, cause you gotta put your building up where you can have your farm standing and, and your little, whatever. So you've only got, that leaves you, say, eight acres left to grow, but you are leasing land in the next town where you've got two acres here and two acres, whatever. And you're growing, so that, it's all the operator, I don't care where it comes from.
Twenty percent on site. I think it would be very hard to prove that fifty percent of it came off of.
I mean, I guess what are we trying to achieve though?
Yeah, but I mean, that's a whole other, you know, more stuff, but.
We, we would want, if we want, like, I have, uh, my house is two and a half acres and I don't have any room to grow anything, but I own a hundred acres in Berlin Township.
Right.
And I put my, but my, my house is on a main road that has lots of traffic, so my farm market is gonna go on Romeo plank, because the traffic's great, where my property, I'm growing everything, you know.
Right.
So, we just have to know, like, one, we're either gonna allow all of these farm stands to pop up, or we don't, don't, right, like, that's essentially what we're trying to.
I think we want farm stands to pop up, but it goes in our master plan, we want farm stands.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
Caitlin, you gotta go back to page one.
So by the operator, you said.
Flip the page over.
Okay.
If you look, read through here, it says, grown by the operator, grown by the operator, fifty percent, shouldn't we keep it consistent?
Um, so again, that was when we were comparing the manufactured food, cause that is grown on site, so I guess what, you are consistent in this section?
Well, a pumpkin pie.
But not in aggro overall, so that's.
I, I'm sorry, sorry, I can.
Not in the agricultural business tourism overall.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want, if we choose purposely that agro businesses are all grown by the operator. Generally speaking, it would seem, again, we can have a different policy discussion for the other one.
Okay.
Um, but I wanna make sure I understand clearly, we want it grown by the operator, I probably would add it to a few of these other use types.
Yeah, that's right.
So again, when you're talking about kitchen facilities, um, it's common that you'd probably put, again, fifty percent of it is grown by the operator, I think that's implied, that that's what you want, this. fifty percent of it is grown by the operator. Think that's implied, that that's what you want, this kitchen facility to have still that on-site component to it? Um.
So I guess I, the one thing that I, I guess, I think I got a little bit off, like, we're talking about ancillary use, right? So I have a, I, I have a farm.
Yep.
And I, I grow pumpkins and I wanna sell pumpkin pies. Well, my farm market stand, like, that's, that's a different classification, because if I were to have a market that I actually had a kitchen in that I baked my pies in and sold them, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about, we're not talking about a farm market, farm stand on the side of the road anymore. Like, if this is only ancillary uses under this.
Correct.
Agribusiness value of farming.
There's two, we're talking about both.
Yeah.
Yep, and so we're not looking at roadside stands.
Right.
But roadside stands don't include commercial grade kitchens.
Right.
Or restaurants.
Right.
So what was the issue with the ten acres? On the minimum size requirement.
Um, I don't think there's anything wrong with ten acres.
Cuz it was grown on site.
I just wanna check that we're, um, being consistent again with what our intention is, and so I don't know that you necessarily need C, Roman numeral I on page two, um, because again, if you put the fifty percent grown by operator everywhere else in the front, we don't need it here, cuz I find it more confusing.
Mm-hmm.
You already, you already vetted it earlier, so we don't need it writ- written twice.
So C, I.
Yeah, C, I would agree, I, I agree with that.
C I, I've got three I.
Two.
Three, C, I.
Three, 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 C, I, page two.
I don't.
Page two.
And page two, C.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so you're saying.
So we take out three C I?
The proposed for.
I, I, I can do that.
And this is when you, again, you wanna modify the site requirements, um, so for the ten acres, um, so.
Yeah, that's a confusion.
Well, why are you taking out I? It says, the planning commission may modify the above minimum site requirements based on the following findings of fact. The pro- proposed farming operation to provide fifty percent of the farm product does not require this additional space.
So you can do it in less than ten acres?
Yes, if you can do it in less than ten ac- acres, now we have the ability to modify for somebody that might have a real niche growing.
But again, that goes back to that on-site versus grown by operator, so we would just have to, so if you wanna keep I, we would just have to add the quotation marks.
By operator.
Grown by the operator, but then the s- the lot size doesn't matter.
Yes. Correct.
Right.
Because it's, it, you don't need ten acres, that's fine, your site still needs to be, like, I guess it feels semantic-y.
Well, yeah.
So you either meant to do it by the operator, or you meant to say that fifty percent has to be on site.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you're picking, but you're kinda picking both.
Easy as way would take it out. Yeah, yeah.
Um, by having that there.
Yeah, I am confused.
I got it.
I just don't, I just don't know that I agree with having either of them. I mean, if, if, and again, it's just easy to, to pick on Jeff, but if he wants to bake apple pies, he can't bake apple pies and sell them at his, in his SAA zoned operation, because he didn't grow the apples. He can't buy them from Blake's, which is a mile down the street, and bake apple pies and sell them then?
So you can, but you, again, fifty percent of the full gambit.
What if I also sell?
So if I use fifty percent of my beef, or fifty percent of the income, or sales sold, or however you guys figure that's fifty percent, then I can, the other fifty percent I can buy, or buy whatever. So who's gonna go and look at his financials to know whether he's doing fifty percent of it?
That's where they wanna imply this one, where you show your tax returns.
Gamps.
I guess that's why, I, I wonder why we're regulating it, like, why we, like, I don't see it being a something that is going to get unbelievably
This is such a.
out of control, because we only have so many of these types of farms and the, the, the people who are looking to go into this agribusiness. I just don't see why we have to regulate it so much.
Because they are regulated, you don't have more.
Doesn't have a restaurant, an ag property, and not get taxed on it, just.
Right, but no matter.
It, it is understandable, cuz every time they can hear you around here, put up a restaurant, uh, you're making.
Well, right, well.
And there's a lot of ten acre pies.
But again, going to a re- that, you, as soon as you wanna put a restaurant and operate all year round, you completely are gone, gone out of this anyways. Like, so it doesn't, it doesn't, this is literally for.
Unless I use fifty percent of my beef to sell in the restaurant that I'm obligated to have in twelve months of the year.
You still can't do it for as long.
Right, right.
That's in the SAA.
That's what I'm saying, this agribusiness, I, because it is agribusiness, and it's very easy to step over the line of, hey, I'm past agribusiness, then I would say, we don't have to regulate this as much, because as soon as they step across that line and step into, hey, I wanna operate twelve months out of the year, or I want to actually have a kitchen that is bringing people in and providing food for them off of a menu, then they're out of this anyways. This is, we're, all we're hurting right now are the, the small farms that want to help bring in outside income from other avenues with this, because it's very easy to step across the line and then become a restaurant, right, which it's, this to me is regulating the small farmers that are just trying to bake apple pies.
Make a living.
See, I, I look at it the other way, is that we allow.
I don't.
Cuz it's a simpler process.
Yeah, this is a, we put this to give them an, an opportunity to do these things. It was a, it was, they didn't have this opportunity before.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, to, to me, it was, uh, you know, this is the first one that we worked on, the, the first, you know, we came up with this so that these things were acceptable, so this was, this was before you, you couldn't do all these things, so it was, uh.
Yeah, it was.
So it paved the way.
We put that together. You couldn't even.
You know.
And I completely.
You couldn't even do half of it.
Right, but it paved the way for other people to.
And I completely agree.
That's why we put it in.
Yeah, and so now that's why we're coming to this, is that, that was, what's in place now is stringent, it's for, you know, this group or this person or whatever, and other people wanna do stuff, or they wanna modify it, and we needed to make it work for more than one person, or two, or three, I mean, so people have the option, right, or opportunity.
Like you said, it's not that hard to come up with your fifty percent number. You can use beef, you can use blueberries, you can use apples.
Right. Right.
You're gonna find a way.
Sunflower seeds.
To some.
Pumpkin seeds.
And you can diverse to other things that might turn into a white elephant kinda thing.
Flowers.
Mm-hmm.
But moving forward, the proposed farming operation, should we just put the operator in it and be done with it? Grown by the operator, for an I?
So my concern is, is, so the operator can always say, well, I can grow the fifty percent on the twenty acres I don't have on this subject property, and it's only five, so can I have the five, um, minimum lot size?
Oh, yeah.
So, so it's a oops, um, in my opinion, I think it's better not to have that. Um, I think the standards two and three are better based on nuisance factors.
That's right.
Um, and so I think that, that is a reasonable reason to have it be less than ten. But, um, I didn't look at your definition of farm, but it's very common, farms require ten acres minimum.
Yeah.
You can fact check that for me, but.
Yeah.
If they're a farm, they're a farm, um.
Well, I, it's a five, ten or five? Do, can you look, DJ?
Yeah, most common to say ten, five for animals.
Five for animals. I think, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Commercial, um, it just kinda refers to, right to farm act.
It's usually the requirement session.
If there's any issue, it doesn't have a. Minimum size.
You don't have one, okay.
I thought we.
We washers just to put this up.
But I think you can use the other standards and get to a better argument.
Resolution.
Yep, cuz all of it again, is grown by the operator.
Yeah.
That's good stuff.
Alright, so it sounds like we did the minimum size requirements. Alright, um.
And plus you don't strap them. I don't wanna strap the residents to ours either. You know, you're not trying to restrict them to where they can't move. I, I want the mobility.
Alright, I agree.
So, and I, and I, again, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So if I was not a farmer, but I wanted to open a bakery, and I was, I guess, I, no matter what, I would have to be then a commer- zone commercial.
Yep.
Correct. But at that point, as long as I was owned commercial, I could operate as a normal bakery, right?
Yep.
So.
We do all need a donut shop.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
And I, and, and again, I, so the, the advantage for somebody being in agribusiness is now they can have a bakery not in commercial space, as long as they're growing a port fifty percent of what they're selling in their bakery.
So the blueberries that go into.
So that's. That is the advantage of the, the, this.
Yep, and it's common, these type of operations, when you have the farm stand kinda component associated with it, you, you do have fritters and donuts and
Mm-hmm.
a few other diversity, again, trying to, to have things, again, that, as things seasonally in and out, you still have something that, you give someone a reason to stop by every Monday morning.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, here to grab my coffee and my donut, and maybe some blueberries.
Yep.
So. Um, so my next component, staying with the same page, is, uh, setbacks.
Yeah.
So your minimum rear yard setbacks in your ag district is sixty feet. Um, so what I put in there is, did you mean to double it to that one twenty feet, or did you wanna keep it to the sixty?
I thought it was a fifty.
Okay, what you're, um.
Correct, so it's less than the required rear yard setback, number problem.
Yeah.
What page are you on?
I'm on page two.
Page two.
Two of ten.
You're on page two.
At the bottom, number four setbacks.
Um, so that's, um.
Why? Why do we have it at a hundred and twenty?
So, again, I didn't know if you just, when you initially drafted, it's not uncommon to have these kinda oopses, um, but it's not uncommon that you double things, again, because there are public involved and residential. You do want it to be farther away from that rear yard, um, setback, so it's not uncommon, you double it. Um, that's why I said, or do you want it to be consistent with the zoning district, which is sixty?
Where, egg, it's fifty feet in the egg, isn't it?
Correct, or, well, not when I looked at the draft.
It says rear, rear yard setback is fifty feet.
Rear setback, yes, yes. I remember that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, well, that's.
So I go.
But not for this, this isn't for residential. Oh, yeah, that's.
Eggs is.
Okay, I was, I'm in the same section. Okay, so the rear yard is sixty feet in the, uh, ag district. So, yeah, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense that we had a smaller minimum rear.
Maybe it's a typo.
Or is it agribusiness?
The agribusiness.
Yep.
Well, why, cuz it.
So you just keep it either as is, or with the sixty, cuz why give them more luxury than that? That's odd. Or did, or communities double it, so that's why I just kinda put that in there as a food for thought, so it's a cross out option. Do you want sixty, or do you want it to be doubled?
It needs to be at least sixty, cuz that's what it's supposed to be in that district.
Correct.
So that, that was obviously just a, just a error.
I say a hundred, seven hundred and twenty.
No, it was, yeah, that's too big.
If you have ten acres, I don't think you're worried about it.
I'd say sixty. That's all, that's deep.
Oh, wait a minute. Egg, egg district, for agribusiness buildings, it is fifty.
For side yard?
Yeah.
No, rear yard.
Rear yard.
It says.
On page seventy-seven.
That's, that's a storage building, not the.
For, um, agribusiness. Agribusiness buildings.
Okay.
Yep, but I was looking at the zoning.
But in the, the zoning district is sixty feet.
That's sixty.
Okay.
So, the, again, number, number oops.
See, Jeff?
Yeah.
Bye. Alright, thanks.
You too.
Bye, Jeff.
I don't mean to be nitpicky, but.
No, I get it.
It makes sense. Let's be consistent with it, if it says.
No, that's.
Yeah, but you have ten acres, and so, again, these agribusiness uses, again, that we have listed, there's a, they're not commonly near your rear yard at all, um, other than, again, your, I believe hayrides is on here, animated barns, those can get into your property, cuz that's where the wooded area is, or the more, so that's where, again, if you were to have someone say, well, I'm gonna have the Honda hayride go sixty feet off the property.
Yeah, they got neighbors lying in property.
Do you think a neighbor's gonna be like, oh, um, could you double that? It's not uncommon. You got ten acres. You, you got.
Okay. We have ten acres, I can go further back.
Or could it have been a typo from a front yard setback on a commercial road?
I think they just copied the side.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Um, but that's why we're here to fix things.
Okay, so, the, the, rear, rear yard usually aren't as sensitive, set, setbacks, cuz that's usually your bigger area on both properties.
Just look for setbacks, right.
Well, and usually, in a traditional lot, it's a rear to a rear.
Right, it's a rear to rear.
Um, but again, these, these agribusinesses could have public involved, and so the question is, should that be more?
Or could be side. Thinking about our, our, our township. There's, there's a few side roads, private, couple private roads. Um, everything else is basically on a one mile grid. And the lots are helping out.
The, the lots are normally much, I mean, obviously deeper than they are.
Either you back up to a farm field, or your property goes back a half mile.
Mm-hmm. They're deep.
There's usually, it's not like a subdivision where there's, oh, well, okay, I can see your swimming pool from my swimming pool, you know, that thing.
Right, it's not a hundred and fifty feet.
I think the side yard is more important. The, the side yard is more important than the rear of the yard.
I would say, I'm not worried about one twenty, it could be a lot less.
I mean, if you look at the, I mean, for instance, this, that we got here, I mean, that's kind of an example of, to me, the.
That's a noise.
Right, but that's what we're talking about, no, you know, like, if you look at, on the map, that road from where the driveway goes right next to their house, and every morning.
I did not see this at all.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's the same example, but it's the issue with the side yard. You have a house that is right next to the side property, where there's hundreds of feet in the back that there's nothing even close. So to me, like, if you're gonna add width of burden, I would say it's more important the side yard, not the rear of the yard.
Technically, you have a procedural number issue technically too, cuz if you look up further at the minimum size requirements under three B, the minimum, um, setback is a hundred feet from any property line. Now, that's only for permanent buildings. So again, this is your hayride situation where public is wandering potentially.
Right, right.
Like you do, there are situations, according to, where a backyard lines up to somebody's side yard.
Oh, sure.
Could, you could very well have, a, a, a close to a resident with your backyard.
So do we like a sixty or a hundred and twenty?
Sixty.
And that's consistent with what your front yard is.
I think you have to do sixty. I think you can't make everybody happy. I mean, there's no way you're never, not gonna run into a situation.
And it is a special land use in some situations, so you can deal with it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, right.
So if it backs up to a side yard, we can say, well.
You can add additional screening if the neighbor's upset about it. Yep, there's ways to address it.
Exactly. I'm good with sixty.
Is everybody comfortable with the sixty to stay aligned with the sixty?
Yeah.
Well, technically, it's, it's another sixty from their setbacks across the property line, so you got your one twenty.
So there's your one twenty.
Oh, that's true, yep.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
Depending on where you're worried about.
Alright, so we'll, we'll put that in line with the district at sixty.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just, that's killing me now, but is that because of, like, an alley?
Huh?
They wanna push through an alley between the businesses?
I don't understand.
The one twenty, or sixty and sixty setback, or, I don't even know why they put one twenty in there. The one twenty, or sixty and sixty setback, or, I don't even know why they put one twenty in there.
Uh, so I put one twenty because communities either want the standard requirement, or they wanna double it.
Gotcha, alright.
So that, that's the only reason I put that as a placeholder, is you usually do one or the other.
Yes, ma'am, alright.
So.
Okay.
Um, so the.
We're learning your ways.
Yep.
Slowly, but we're learning.
So now I'm on page two of the review letter, um, and we're on page three of ten, is talking about parking. So again, I don't, I don't have anything redlined here, um, that I propose, like, change it. Um, but I do wanna make sure we, if we're gonna look through this whole thing, take a second and say, so does the parking requirements work for what we want? Um, so again, making sure that there's a parking spot ratio of one space per a hundred and twenty, um, feet of the building area. Um, you're looking at, again, every two hun- two thousand five hundred square feet is consistent of ten parking spaces. You have to make sure there's, um, movable barriers, um, associated with where traffic can flow. Um, making sure that the gravel is been, um, again, the condition of it, um, is a bit better. Again, no topsoil or things of that nature. Um, again, current condition of it, um, regarding different soils and things of that nature. Um, requiring of the agr- um, aggregate, which is your gravel, overflow parking, where that can be located. Clearly, no parking's allowed in the right of way, parking is a hundred feet from any exterior property line.
You must be right, there's nothing yellow or red on this page.
Yep, so, I just, again, if there's anything we don't like, um, again, since we have processed some uses under this, um, you saw what that red flagged, how often that got red flagged. Um, and so, same thing with like pedestrian circulation, those pathways being clearly identified.
On the setbacks, did you take this out of the book?
Yep.
Our ordinance?
Yep.
Then why did you write, I would recommend?
Where?
On, oh, I ripped the number off, uh, page two, on the, the definitions in setbacks. You have this page.
Yep.
And then the back page right here, setbacks.
Yep.
Am I blind or?
Under sixteen thirty-nine.
Oh, I think, I think you're correct, sixteen forty.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, it's alright.
That's alright, um, and then again, uh, food for thought, clarify between your temporary and permanent structures. Um, so that's just something that I think, um, is important to note, um.
Okay, but you've, you've moved past page two, but I, I don't know that we've got event barn, small scale entertainment settled.
Yep, because that's the page four, so I was trying to play with the page numbers and I'll.
Okay. Don't also have a method to your madness.
Yep, 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 sorry about that, changing strategies live, um.
So, okay, so eight oh two, okay, you're in line.
Alright, so we like what we have otherwise, alright, I'm gonna call those all good then. Alright, so, now we're gonna circle back to the small events or event barns. So again, based on your general deliberation, um, I'm proposing that you'd pull event barns no longer as part of an agricultural practice, and that these can be something somebody converts and does on their property without having to have a farm component.
I like that idea.
And so what I did was, is I copied and pasted everything from the agro-business component with some recommendations to, to modify it, again, with those small, um, event situations, um, just to kind of, um, scale it to what we think is reasonable for event barns. So the first one was eliminate a minimum lot size. Some communities, it's not uncommon to have some level of lot size, um, typically, it's not twenty acres, um, again, you're looking at your five to ten. Um, I don't know if you still wanna keep something like that, um, but it doesn't seem like we were as concerned on the lot size on applications we've recently processed, we haven't enjoyed our benchmark we've had.
Okay, so event, event barn is not under value added, is now, is now under eight oh two, which is special approval.
I don't think so.
We're taking it off here.
Yes, yep, yep.
And, and it wasn't shown as crossed off.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I don't understand why we took small scale entertainment out of the value added, cause I, this, this statement, event barn shall be considered small scale entertainment, I don't know that I agree with that.
Where are you looking for, you didn't see that?
Section eight oh two on page four.
Well.
The first statement.
Right now, we have small scale entertainment under our value added ag. And now, proposed that we have a s- event barns as a special land use, and event barn shall be considered small scale entertainment.
So, we don't have to, we take the things out, just event barns are their own identity.
Yeah.
We don't know what event, they're gonna have a craft show, they're gonna have a baby shower, they have an event in the barn.
Right.
I just, I do, I do kind of agree, only because like you look at like trillion, trillion farms, like that is made for a wedding barn, but they don't farm.
Indoor garage sale, theme market.
They're just, they just have beautiful barns that they inherited.
Yeah, they're event barns.
So that's why they should be their own category, because doing flowers is, again, we're, we should not be talking about very specific people,
Mm-hmm, right. Right.
Cause we don't want it to be doing that.
Right.
Where, like, you, you, you look at like Miller's, they're, they're an actual farm, but they could also host a baby shower in their barn if they wanted to.
But that's why you moved it.
That's why I moved it.
Hmm.
Yeah, but you gotta look at it, there's, all barns are different sizes and configurations, that's why you gotta be more general.
Ri- right, right.
But, but I, I, I think what we're saying is, we're in agreement that event barn should be under special land use.
Yes, I agree.
Is that, but, that, that's agreeable, I just, I just don't like the, the part about them being special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It, it used to be in the agribusiness, where like, to me, if you wanna have a wedding barn, you don't have to grow the flowers in order to qualify as agribusiness.
The, the event barns were, were never, were never under value added, they, we just had that catchall at the end.
Or can you work to have one hell of a floral garden to supply the flowers for the wedding or the banquet?
Right, I do think it's better like that.
So circling back to lot size, do you what like one?
That's my turn.
What page?
Uh, I'm still on page four of ten.
So, if you have.
So right now, the, the, uh, the benchmark I crossed out is the twenty, um, and that's based on your small scale entertainment idea.
So if, I guess, what is, the two hundred person capacity is at the, the event, right, that's.
Yep.
In that building, so in order to have adequate parking for two hundred people.
Yep.
How much space does that require?
Right.
I mean, and then on top of that, I mean, you have to have enough setbacks, like, we could literally just give the, whatever, calculate the minimum property.
So then you don't need a minimum lot size, cause the answer will solve itself.
Right, because you just have to go on based on, yeah, I don't think there should be a lot size that.
Correct.
Well, and then if you think that, for parking, let's say I have two acres and I have a beautiful barn. And I have an empty field across the street, and I know, you know, John Smith owns it, and he tells me I can park cars there. And I have a shuttle service, so I'm paying John Smith two hundred bucks to let people park there. Then I don't need parking.
Yeah, but you have to own it, but if that's the way I'm.
No.
So you can, so there is the parking where you can have, okay, so I don't memorize your ordinance, but I'm pretty confident
I am.
that you have a three hundred foot parameter for off-site parking that's allowed, as long as you're within three hundred feet. However, if it's just a field, you have stipulations, it cannot be topsoil in this gravel parking lot, it has to be a gravel parking lot. Um.
It's not a farm field.
Right.
Yep, so, so there, so again.
Or I live next to Dupree's Market, and he doesn't do anything there on Saturday nights or whatever, and he said I could use it, his parking lot.
So, does it, is that, does the ordinance, are you still, do, I guess.
So based on knowing you, I think you shouldn't have a minimum lot size, cause you already have setbacks and you're willing to play with in those setbacks.
Yes, I think that's pretty good.
That the setbacks dictate.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you set the fit, the parking and everything.
That's right.
Yeah.
You still have to function accordingly.
So if you, if you only have parking for a hundred and twenty-five people, then that is the maximum that is allowed within the building at any one time.
Right.
Cause you're, you're likely looking at properties that are at least two fifty in width, because you have to stay a hundred feet away from a property line.
But they're coming in for special land use approval anyway.
And then, no matter. And it comes.
That's correct, so you, again.
Exactly, so we would have stipulations on it, yeah.
So you can add buffering, things of that nature, um, so I, I, I don't think you want one.
Yeah. I think it's best to take it out.
Okay.
We don't need to add the extra limits.
Extra, right.
I'm gonna give my opinion no matter what.
Alright, so, one of the things I also wanted to clarify is, do you wanna have it be two hundred person, again, consistent with the small scale events, but then three hundred person facilities are, again, that event facility? So, the, the point I'm pointing out is there's a number thing, so there's two hundred, and then you have this mysterious two hundred to three hundred.
Two hundred are allowed within the facility though, and that you could have an event going out, you could have a big bonfire area outside and, right?
That nobody has.
Like, that's the whole point of that.
Um, so my, my number issue is, if I have a venue and I wanna have two hundred and fifty people, I don't know where I go. Cause I'm not a small scale, cause I want more than two hundred, but I haven't reached the threshold of three hundred, so by default, I would say you have to be the three hundred. Um, and that's the way you'd have to go, but I just wanted to check that number, is that.
That's difficult.
That you didn't mean it as anything over two hundred.
No, cause they, even if you're going to a banquet hall, and you're having five hundred people.
Yeah, and that's even in the cone, uh, it's out there.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so I will change then the event facility to be over two hundred, and that way we don't have that weird.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, so event and, uh, hosting facilities are defined, but banquet halls are? Um, I don't think you actually have banquet halls listed in your table of uses, um, so, um.
So we don't have any.
No.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm in my cover letter, um. And just kinda pointing out that, um, you do define banquet halls, but you don't have an event and hosting facilities definition.
That was part of the problem with the SA district, we didn't have definitions for the items we had there. Okay, so banquet hall.
Cause I presume, other than some, again, terminology change for event barns, we liked otherwise all the other regulations associated with agro businesses as far as parking, as far as, um, different conditions, um, the driveways, noise. So I, I kept that as drafted, cause it sounded like those are things that are already harmonious with what we wanted. Um, staying on page four of ten, um, I recommended removing F, talking about overflow parking. Um, I think generally for these event, um, barn situations, you probably wanna accommodate the two hundred, so there is no overflow. You're accommodating two hundred as part of your standard parking practices. Don't know if you generally agree with that, as opposed to, in agro-business, you may, you don't necessarily know exactly who's gonna be there, so overflow parking makes a little bit more sense.
Is more prominent, yeah, where you'd be more lenient in the agribusiness, where we're not gonna be as lenient in the special approval.
Yep. Yep, yep. So that's it on event barns slash the small venue.
Do you, do you have a definition for event barns?
Uh, duh, 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 duh.
I mean, we've got banquet hall.
Cause I think you could just relabel banquet hall to be that.
Hosting facilities, banquet hall, same thing.
Yeah, that's basically what it is.
Whatever the, we don't care if it's, if it's banquet style or a family style, it doesn't matter.
Section sixteen thirty-nine.
So we, so we've got a, our ban- our banquet.
Section sixteen thirty-nine, DJ, letter D.
Letter D, what?
Event section sixteen thirty-nine, you asked for a definition?
For a hosting. That's in the SA, SA just.
Events should take place within an entirely enclosed building.
But this, event, this is an event hosting facility though, it's not an event barn.
Cause the biggest thing with your banquet hall, um, is that it hosts private events, may or may not include kitchen, gardens, reception, cell of alcohol, consumption on property. I think that generally is the catchall for everything we're talking about, so we can just simply add that to that definition.
Hosting facility.
Yep.
A banquet hall is a hosting facility.
Same thing with the barn.
Okay, so the event barn shall have outdoor gardens?
It could, I mean, it could, is what, personally.
So, we're not gonna have anything about having this all contained i- inside the barn?
No, sometimes, no.
So you could have a event barn on a two, a five acre parcel with outdoor entertainment?
We're adding a flag.
They gotta come in for special land use anyway, so, we don't need to make the rules so tight for that, right, for an event barn?
Okay, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
I mean, if you have an event barn that has a beautiful gazebo in the back, on two acres, that you have your ceremony outside, I mean, that would be typical, and then you go in for your reception.
Into the, right into the barn for your reception and dance.
Right, so I mean, I would expect to have a garden area or something like that, in an, added event barn.
Where the couple can take their pictures in a certain spot, or.
Exactly. Exactly.
Which is again a change from the agro-business.
Right, that's why we would be pushing this right.
Okay.
I, I thought we had something about, when we were looking at the other event barn, about, uh, being contained with inside the building, or. You know, amplified sound outside of.
Yeah, it was, it was just amplified sound, it was, yeah.
Just, yeah, so they're, yeah, having like music or whatever has to be inside, it can't be outside.
So page, so page five of ten has the noise provision, um, has the access parts, but does not say,
Yeah.
shall be specific to only in the building, which is correct, different than our agro-business general classifications.
But isn't that, that's what I'm asking, is, isn't D one specifying that, events shall take place within entirety of an enclosed building? Wouldn't that cont- contain it?
Where, where is that?
That's under the event hosting facility.
Under sixteen point three nine.
That, that's a, that's a different animal though, that's.
Correct.
It's still, but isn't that an event?
Nope, 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 different, different use.
It's hosting facility.
Okay.
This is a section eight oh two, this is under ag.
For event barns.
Yeah, I know, I, I, but, okay, my mistake.
Special land use.
They're coming in for special land use if it's an event barn.
So, so this, this is something you could make a requirement under the special land use.
Oh, yes, so, so, based on my knowledge of you previously processing applications, it doesn't sound like you want event barns to be only indoors.
Right.
Right.
So that's why it's not included, because you seem pretty certain that that's not what you want.
But you can put it as a requirement within a specific one.
If. You want it. So the capacity is two hundred within the facilities, so if they're saying, oh, well, we're gonna also have this outdoor reception area, so the venue is two hundred, and you cannot have dual weddings if the expectation is over two hundred. So if you have two one hundred person weddings, okay, but if you're having two two hundred, no, no, that, that is exceeding our personnel threshold. But again, people in a barn wedding, they like to be outside to do their ceremony if it's great, and have a backup option to be inside, that's super common. So, um, does everyone feel comfortable putting a pin in it? Okay.
Should we put, should we specify more, like, per one date? Like you're saying, two hundred person capacity for the hall.
It seemed like you guys wanted to do that on a case by case basis, um, so if you.
That's fine. Yeah, 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 I think you're right.
Oh, it's special land use.
And so I, the hours of operation seem pretty consistent with where you felt, um, again, looking at the hours of these kind of events, again, three hours or four hour period, again, not necessarily doing a Greek wedding where it's all day, not that I'm Greek, so, um, but.
I got you, go ahead, you're right.
So, most weddings are over three hours.
So we can change it or remove it?
Four, right?
Well, if they're getting married, they're in, have the reception there, yeah, it can be four.
It would be, yeah, four or five.
Entertainment usually charges you for a four hour, um, block, yeah.
I, I think you, that doesn't work, that three to five hours.
Four to five hours.
Okay, so do you want to remove the section, or that continuation of the sentence?
I do this a lot.
That's not what I said.
Oh, what, what is the thought on that?
Change it to four.
It, it can't be under four hours, cause that's just not workable.
Okay, so, do, or do you wanna specify how long it is, other than, again, we do have the hours of operation, events cannot be from eleven PM to eight AM.
I was gonna say, why do we have it in there at all, if we have a cutoff time that it can't be passed a certain time and, and a noise.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, but our noise ordinance is, is at eleven.
You can't really enforce it anyway, what are you gonna do?
Mary, isn't it, yeah, that's there.
Start at this time.
So to take out all.
Everybody out.
Alright, so I'm taking out two, got it.
No, you're leaving the capacity, but you're taking out the time, everything after capacity.
Well, yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, but, I like that three, leave that, and, okay.
Right.
That's better, cause that phrase after was just confusing anyway.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, now are we ready to put a pin in it?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so next, uh, hold on, I gotta keep my pages in order.
Would it be easier if, when we do this, if, if we have, like, the pages stapled together, like, like this section, just one section on one page, and what we have, and, and the change, and we can just take that paper, do it, play it aside, rather than keep saying that for five or four.
Maybe next time.
Nobody?
It would've been a little easier to do the ag section separate from the SA, I think.
I, yeah, it's, it's all.
It's just very easy to get them, yeah, it's just very easy to get them confused, cause you're so similar.
The rest are more sequential.
Got you.
Um, so then we're looking at sixteen thirty-nine, so that's still page two of my cover letter, five of ten.
Okay, so we changed that to sixty, on the other side.
The rear yard, the, yeah.
Yep, so we can do that same change here if you would like.
We changed here to sixty. And then, um, under D, events shall take place in an entirely closed building, we, yeah, we pretty much took that out also.
Do you want to, these are for large events.
This is.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, okay.
This is, this is the way it is written right now.
Correct, unless it's red and crossed out.
The hundred. Okay, just, we don't have to change that hundred and twenty, I mean, if we don't, if we don't make any changes to this, we.
Um, so I believe it is that, that setback placeholder is, um, fifty. I think you had the same fundamental problem, cause it was copy and pasted from one to the other, one to the other.
Yeah, I was gonna say, shouldn't it be sixty?
Sixteen.
So I do recommend you put that to sixty.
And then the other requirements, events shall take place.
Okay, so it was, oh, so it was fifty, it's not, okay.
So if you're having like a rodeo or something, yeah, it has to be all inside.
So it's not, is it, true?
Um, so we're now under D one.
Right.
D one.
It's under people, you think.
Uh, no, sixteen.
Okay.
So the event and hosting facility, D one, so events should take place.
I think the rest we can leave. Cause that's how we wrote the ordinance.
Okay, so this is not written exactly like the ordinance.
What are you saying?
For the, this.
No, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at the difference between our, the way the ordinance is written and the way it's presented here.
Are we still all talking about the enclosure of a building or are we on a different provision?
Closure of the building.
They usually have a small area outside for smoking.
Again, or the reception outdoors, just like we talked about for event barns.
Yes.
So do we want to modify that, um, so again, you can take it out completely, um, in which we clarify, and again, the occupancy component and the three hundred people is again based on, rather than the number of guests that are regi- event, um, right, um, maximum gas, we clarified that that's the amount in the building, um, and ensure that the building is big enough to accommodate guests as opposed to it's on a farm and we're putting up tents. So there is no facility.
This outdoor event, if we're putting up tents.
Correct, cause we don't otherwise allow.
And it's a special land use anyway, so we will deal with that.
Yeah, I, I do think it does need to be, when we continue to try to monitor the same thing with different inputs, like it gets very confusing. Right, if you wanna, like you said, you already, you already are limiting the building with, with the number of guests, and then the number of guests, the size is limited by the parking, so you know, it's just becomes redundant when we are basing on multiple things, I think that could come up.
The other thing you can do is you ensure that it's not a certain square footage, if there is a concern to say, hey, we don't want anything over um, a thousand square feet. Again, you can, you don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, I just think we.
So we're removing one. It's off, three heads, not yes.
So you, you were taking out the events shall take place in an enclosed building?
That's right.
Because if, if they propose something that is, outlandish or crazy, they're still, we have to approve it no matter what.
They have like a fireworks show at ten o'clock, you don't want that inside.
Okay, so I, I see you took out intent, which it said it was to renovate an existing structure for the purpose of hosting events or to construct a new building or structure, so we're going a different direction, this was about basically like a banquet hall, and now it's going to an event or hosting facility, title even correct anymore. It's no longer a facility, if you're taking out the building.
Well, an event and, oh, it could be or hosting facility, it doesn't need to be and.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but before this was, this was, this was specifically a building for hosting an event and now it's, now it's just an event with no building.
And hosting facilities.
Why don't we just take the word and out and just put event hosting facility?
Well, then it's gonna, then it's back to a building.
If you just put an S on the end of event, make it events and hosting facilities.
Well, you're, you're making this ordinance into something that it isn't, if you're making an event, events, cause it wasn't events, it was a, a vent facility, it was a, it was a building.
Sixteen forty is special outdoor events.
Turning it into a different thing. I believe the events are gonna be these special outdoor events. This is, this is a different animal here. I mean, this, this is.
So that's why, again, some communities do restrict the amount of outdoor, um, in these event banquet facilities, understanding you may want to do some components outdoors, but it's not a full-on, everything's outside.
So left on fifty percent.
I, I, I agree with Maureen that maybe if this just said event hosting facilities instead of and, it would, it would make more sense that this, that's what it is, it's a.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, if they wanna do something big and outside, then they're gonna be a special outdoor event.
So you're not eliminating number one then?
No, because I think it was two different things we were talking about, I was thinking it was out, I didn't know it was a special.
I think that the, the, the title was just confusing with the and in there.
Yep.
That they're, that they, that they thought it was two different things and it's really just an event hosting facility, which is, it's kinda like a big.
Or, or you could just put banquet facility, because that's the same thing with event hosting, it's just kinda, why don't we just call it banquet hall?
Right, it could be like a, um.
Yeah, but a banquet hall is just, you know.
Like, what's it showcasing, nobody or whatever?
This here, cause you want people to be able to have events over three hundred people, or do you just wanna keep event barns?
Dinners in there.
We need, we need to get back to understanding what the purpose, what the intent of that ordinance was.
This was in the ag district.
Correct, this is SAA.
This is SAA.
SAA.
This is one of the four SAA.
But what if you had like a big huge barn, very large barn, you could do a circus in there, you could, we, I've been to like big dinners that were like in a very large barn facility, but it was like a black tie dinner thing. You know, I mean, so it, it depends on how you decorate.
Not to be rude, but what's your point? I don't, I don't.
Event, so that's why it's different than a banquet hall, it's an event hosting facility.
You have an event.
If this was just.
So the other thing to note, um, is D two, alright, under one, that requires that the township board determine that the event hosting facility is truly accessory to the site's agricultural use or uses, so we're back to an agricultural component, which is why event barns is pulled out and doesn't have that, so.
I think, I, I don't think you even need.
So you may not need this if you have, choose to have event barns, event venues, um, and the question is, do you care if it's two hundred or three hundred? Cause this only is for those ex- not to exceed three hundred.
I think you have event barns and then you have your large ou- or special outdoor events, I think this one is kind of just redundant with your event barn.
It's a building.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, we, we never had event barns before, so now it, it is good, yeah, we've added that, now we've got some redundancy.
I would eliminate it.
Eliminate number one.
Nope, I think you, I think you either want event barns and that to be, and again, uses can stack, so if somebody is a farm and would like to do an event barn as an, an accessory to their, there is no problem. It's a special land use, great, um, but again, when we keep having these conversations, we don't seem to want the farm or don't care as much about the farm compo- some, some of our members have expressed that.
Yeah.
So, the real question is, do we mean that fundamentally?
This isn't for the SAA then, yeah.
Correct, so it would be over the entire ag district.
Everybody can do this, if they come in with special land use and they can do it.
Yep.
And then the question is, is, are we limiting it to two hundred?
Or three hundred.
Or three hundred.
So, by adding the event barn in the special land use of the ag district, we've kind of made this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we just leave it at two hundred because it's a special use, then you, you can, it's base it off of the actual, like when they come in for their.
Two hundred is the number, unless you get a variance to have more.
That's what I'm saying, but that would have to be done.
To get.
Okay.
So two hundred's the number.
Yeah. So you're gonna limit them to two hundred, the, the event barns, and, and in effect, the event hosting facility?
Yep. And then again, if they wanna have their craft show or whatever the case is, they, they can do that as most of them are outdoor.
That would be a special outdoor event.
Yep.
So, I guess, and again, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear, so if we're gonna eliminate this sixteen point three nine, we're gonna do a event at barn, w- event barn with two hundred people, max capacity in the building. If, so, trying to think of another reason why they would have that many people without a wedding, right? If I have parking, adequate parking for two hundred and fifty guests, and I'm only allowing two hundred in the building at one time, the fifty can't be in the garden out back, if my parking allows.
Too close to the rule, so your, your intention is to only have the carrying capacity of the two hundred.
Okay.
So if you're doing a phenomenal mom-to-mom sale, that you get everyone within the county to go to, um, the goal is again, to have the two hundred people frequently coming in, coming out, again, passive type things, um, or this isn't the appropriate venue for you, you need to find somewhere else.
Okay.
So what if you wanna throw a wedding for three hundred people?
Then you can't be in this township.
Yes.
Can't go in this township.
Well, unless you get the banquet hall in a commercial district, but you cannot do that in our ag district, it's too many.
Okay, we obviously have a property that would handle that, no problem, but. The other thing, this, this uh, um, event hosting facility is not, no one has uh, got this, so th- this would not affect anybody in the township at this point.
Right.
I don't know how it was applied to Blake's, but I presume they probably have it. Yeah.
They, they do, they do, they do not have approv- they do not have approval for this.
Oh, okay.
They have the other three.
Oh, okay, so.
I'm all for making it simpler.
I think, I think you eliminate it, I think it makes it much easier, if we have issues down the road, we can always amend it there.
Right, the, yeah, this, they have the three out before, right? So this, this is not, this, this ordinance has not been used for anyone at this point.
Okay, even easier.
So, is it, is everybody good with that to go with the event bars and special land use?
What were you saying about, um, you know, a person that had to do it with three hundred?
No, I'm saying a wedding, a three hundred person, yeah, the, obviously, the cider mill's big enough to hold, host a three hundred person.
Yeah, and so is a independent barn, you know, you got barns that can, well, we know that for a fact.
Yeah, but you don't have parking for three hundred cars though, at, at a standard barn.
Well, three hundred people doesn't mean three hundred cars, three hundred people means a hundred and fifty cars.
Sure, you can accommodate that, but is that, are we saying that we're cutting it at two hundred and that's it, is what I'm reading?
That's what I'm hearing.
And I don't like cutting it at two hundred, I mean.
That three hundred person wedding is, is doable.
Very doable. I'm, I'm just.
So we may wanna consider the.
You know, cause then it's lea- in my, no, I know, but it.
Again, yeah, we're eliminating.
It's up to the owner of the facility, whether they wanna have, you know, two hundred people or limited to two hundred people or three hundred people. Cause that's their property.
What do fire marshals limit?
The fire marshal will, yeah, based on what their capacity is and what the structure is like and.
If we're eliminating the event and hosting facilities, yeah, then just make it three hundred, because then the fire marshal's gonna dictate that final number anyways.
Right.
But that's just based on the building you have.
Are we allow, are we allowing?
So, so the, the biggest fundamental que- the reason you put a maximum capacity is due to the intensity of the operation. We don't have a frequency counter on there, and so having a three hundred person wedding, living next to it every weekend for every week in the summer, is that okay? Cause if we don't have a number, you could have a five hundred person wedding, and this isn't just, oh, it's my niece, she's borrowing our barn, we're gonna do this, this weekend and then.
And do you, because this is so new, do you start with something quaint that's is smaller scale? And then we can see how they go, if there's complaint, you know, it, as we get, as we get more of these in here.
Them from that, if someone says, again, they can do it in a phasing approach, but if someone says, I wanna do a five hundred person wedding venue with three different barns and have three different weddings, each are a hundred person weddings, you're opening that door.
Right, no, I'm saying if we stick with two hundred right now, it seems limiting to an extent, but three years from now, five years from now, when there are several event barns all scattered throughout the community, and it, that we need to expand on that number, could we not expand on that number then?
Yes, you could amend it later.
So what number would you put on it? Could it, could it be applied for a variance or is that a use variance?
Um, so you can't, it's not a use, because it's a number that helps define the use. So you can apply for variance for having more than two hundred, but tell me how that's not self-imposed.
Right.
And not for financial compensation, so, um, not a great variance. Um, could you put in parameters that says the planning commission could modify it to be not exceeding five hundred if they meet A, B, C? Sure, procedural concern, um, over time, are you just, are you doing that because you, those standards all make sense? Are you consistently applying that, or are you having winners and losers?
So how would you put it, so?
I think you can stick with the two hundred, we are not getting a lot of applications for more than the two hundred for, again, standalone in ven- event venues, um, and I think you wanna, you don't want these popping up everywhere, we don't have a location criteria on a paved road or anything of that nature, these could be a lot of different places, and you can deal with the traffic or, we can play how some of these play out, um, but I, I think the two hundred is a reasonable number to be a reasonable operation for weddings. You can do three hundred, three hundred also sounds like a reasonable number, um, my wedding was one hundred and eighty-six people and that felt like a lot of people, so, um, again, different people have different things, but.
Wedding was four hundred and sixty-five.
Exactly, mine was three hundred something, so yeah.
We, we could have a dozen applications for this without, without any problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there's, there's enough, there's enough big barns.
People are interested in this use, so, again, you can do two hundred, three hundred, I think those are reasonable numbers for again, when we're talking about sizing and things of that nature, but again, once you put that number.
So I think you go to two fifty.
Groom, they have an idea of what they're gonna have, or how many people they're gonna have, and they're gonna find venues that are gonna accommodate what they have, if they have a five hundred person, they know five hundred people are gonna be invited, they're not gonna look at a place that's only, has a one hundred and fifty person capacity.
But those are, they're, the five hundred is kind of a lot, I can see.
I'm not saying we should do that, but I'm just saying, um, but typically, and, and, and cost is a factor in, in how many people are invited to a guest, you know, yeah.
What's the difference, do three hundred and be out of it?
Two fifty, three hundred?
It's already a three hundred, no?
No. Two hundred. We're, we're eliminating this.
Oh, we're going back, yep. What do you wanna do?
Let's split it at two fifty.
Do I just start at two fifty until we've figured out it's halfway in between? Okay, so maybe this could be two fifty.
Alright, that's fine.
Okay, so we're, it's gonna eliminate sixteen point three nine, event and hosting facility. Okay.
Oh my gosh.
We're going to sixteen forty-nine?
Yeah.
Yep, so now we're on page six of ten. We only have six and eight to go and then we're done with everything we just meant to do.
Right off the bat does not have a definition, and that came up.
Special outdoor events.
What is a special outdoor event?
One is just for you.
It's so special to me, so that was the first problem right there, it's not defined.
It's just outdoor events.
Fireworks.
Special land use required of events, no, this is, this is in the SAA, just outdoor events.
Now, with someone.
Is this like a bocce ball tournament, a cornhole tournament?
As far as I know, it's anything that's outdoors that is inviting members of the public.
Okay, we have, we have.
But is it motorized?
No, because that's a violation of our.
So we already have a track and mud bogging, so as long as it's defined somewhere else, it fits in those categories, um, as opposed to everything else, and again, your zoning administrator can interpret what uses fall into what category, um, and make it from there, but agreed, yes, so a special outdoor event, are these public events or are these private events? Typically, how we've discussed them, it seems to be more you're inviting the general public and it's different when it's a church, again, doing your mom-to-mom sale. You don't wanna start regulating that, um, but when you're inviting members of the general public to attend my event, that's when we care from a public use standpoint, a public safety standpoint, as opposed to you personally doing.
So like a car show, a classic car show to benefit muscular history or something, I don't know, whatever. Or just a car show because, so, yeah.
No, we brought this in because there was Freedom Hill issue, they were building that, and we didn't want, I remember something because when the amplified sound, when you highlighted it, for events with amplified sound, we had an issue with that and we, we were kinda like trying to get ahead of the curve.
Well, people that live by free.
I remember that.
Ah, well, people that live by Freedom Hill love to have your concerts there.
No, they did, not in the beginning.
You're baiting yourself.
Wow.
Okay, well, so, we, we have, we have one property that has this, and it's limited to seven s- special events per year, and, but there is no definition, would it make sense to just have it right in the, the very beginning of this, to just say what it is, rather than have to go back to the definitions?
Yes. Yep, I think so, because it's more of the intent of it, um, as opposed to defining it, this is intended to be for.
Right, so.
Um, so kinda definition-like, but, um, I think that would, and it's consistent with how you have other sections.
So it needs an intent, okay. Yeah, this, for some reason, they all have intents except for this one, one level.
So is it fair to say these are public events?
With amplified sound, cause if you had, if you had a, a car show.
I think you wanna keep it to not amplified too, though.
But if you have a car show.
You're gonna have an auctioneer or something, or you have somebody like.
Yeah, you're allowed to do. It shouldn't have amplified sound in the definition, cause it can, doesn't have to.
Announcing the winner.
We wanna regulate it if they do propose it, but again, a craft show does not have typically amplified noise.
Normal, right.
No, but what if you're doing a car show or a car auction, or like a beer Jackson auction, or.
Yeah.
You know, something like that, that's.
Fifty acres is pretty big.
Then you're gonna have amplified sound, cause you're gonna have a microphone.
Alright, so stick on point with the intent, what collection of uses do we think are appropriate, it's public events, so you're inviting the general public, is that?
Okay.
Um, so, so, it's currently cider days lavender fest.
Sunflowers?
Sunflower fest.
And there's something usually later day too, or something?
Is that beer, do you say the beer one, crazy days, or cider, that's cider days.
That's cider days, um, and these are, they're inviting.
And.
There's a, that K run, that K run.
Mm-hmm, that K run.
Uh, so it's primarily outdoors, that's important to have as part of this intent, um, and it's meant to be temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just an event.
So do you want it to be a day?
So, not, not a free market every weekend, that would be eliminated.
Correct, right, and we're talking about a day or a few days, again, a, a.
Right. Weekend, usually a weekend, or, you know, could be, doesn't have to be a weekend, but it should be limited to like, three days or something.
A weekend.
Be Friday to three days, or, yeah, three to Friday to Sunday.
Three day maximum.
So you got temporary, so we're saying like three day or something.
Three days. Okay, is that kind of painting the picture then of when we're trying to generally think of what we want, that's what we're talking about?
Well, we already have that in there, outdoor events, no more than three days.
Correct.
No more than three per week.
So, the only thing I'm looking at too is like, if you're, if you're limiting them to only have a, a maximum of how many per year, seven?
Three per week.
Three, four.
Well, this, this says no more than three per week, outdoor events should be limited to more than three per week.
Well, then, then.
That, that was.
After seven P M.
What was granted in their special land use was the seven.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, cause I'm just, like, even the screening, like, if, if it's a temporary, and you're, you're talking about temporary events that you might have once or twice a year, but then you're requiring them to do a six-foot wooden fence, which is a permanent structure for a temporary event? I don't, if you're already setback off of the property line a hundred feet, would you still require them to do a greenbelt, six-foot fence, decorative material or some combination thereof?
Again, these aren't the one, this is a venue that expects to do it multiple times a year.
For a temporary event? Okay, okay.
Okay, first off, we do have intent in this ordinance, it's not, and it says, this special approval land use permits
You do.
the applicant to host outdoor events in a designated event hosting area.
Oh, see, I removed it, cause I intended it not to be as relevant, oops.
What did you say, DJ, has?
And our, the, the current event, this is missing some information, the current one says it does have an intent.
It's okay.
It says, this special approval land use permits the applicant to host outdoor events in a designated event hosting area. That was, that was the intent, which is sort of a semi-definition of this.
So we're gonna build on that, so.
We're gonna build on that, right.
Well, re-add it, and then I mentioned again, public events, primarily outdoors, temporary in nature, so three days or less.
Yeah.
Even though you can have three in a week, um, there, okay, so that clarify our intent, we're painted that picture, we'll re-add that, um, now that it'll be more of a definition purpose to it.
Yeah, so we're gonna add the public event, three days.
And I know we talked about other concerns, but I wanna keep in consistent with our letter, minimum lot size, that's the next item, that's bullet A one.
Fifty acres.
Fifty acres.
For an outdoor event that's a lot of space, but.
Mm-hmm.
So what'd you plan?
Yeah, yeah, I like it, so you're.
No, you clearly aren't happy about it, um, so what do you think that number should be, well, at least two of you have been vocal about it.
We're not? Oh.
I, I just, I guess I'm, I'm thinking of, can't, can't the adequate parking per person dictate the acre, or like, if you, if you're gonna have four hundred people, or four hundred, I don't, I don't know, can't you let that dictate that instead of, of giving it an actual acreage size? Or a lot size?
We don't have special, or other than B, uh, where it talks about setbacks, where it's a hundred feet from all property lines, um, and again, it says all be a minimum of a hundred feet, so I don't know if that just means out, again, it's an outdoor use, so I would say all outdoor activities for this should be at least a hundred feet from a property line. So, yes, that does regulate it, and then you do have to accommodate screening, you have to accommodate parking.
Right, cause even C says parking shall be provided at a rate of one space for every two persons allowed within the event's act, area's maximum occupancy, as determined by the fire department, so that fifty acres is kind of, like, this is, this is determining how many people you can fit in, take in the event just by the parking space.
Okay, well, well, before we get, before we get too far, I just wanna make a comment that, when we do these, this should be written exactly as it is in the book, because the setbacks in our book are two hundred feet on the front, rear, and side, and that should be, you know, ex, you know, highlighted or read it out, because this is not an accurate depiction of what it was.
So in the letter, I do mention that.
In the front.
And, so under number two, I do mention that in the memo.
Yeah, I see that.
But that's, it's, yeah, but the, but the way it's proposed is that you've got, you know, Xed out and read and, and added, um, it's very confusing, very confusing to flip back and forth.
Yeah, I can see where that's confusing, sorry.
Cause now you're proposing just one hundred feet from all property lines is from two hundred feet.
Correct, to be consistent with other thresholds.
But these are the only events that you would have am- amplified outdoor sound?
You can for event barns now, though.
You can in event barns, okay.
That's fine with a hundred.
Well, this, this is for events with amplified sound, that's where we've got the two hundred foot setbacks.
Right, but you still have to need.
So I think the question is, do you want it at two hundred, or do you want it at a hundred?
Oh, you've got it two hundred, just, okay, let's just reword it.
I don't have a lot.
Did, did, did we not say the sound could only stay within the facility in an event barn, amplified sound?
That's.
I thought that was.
This is special for the barn.
Yeah, no, I know that, but what I'm saying is, this is the only section that you can have amplified outdoor sound, I thought event barns, it was limited to inside the barn, inside the facility.
That the one that we, oh, trillion, that's what we said.
Right, that's what we said, a trillion, which would be.
Right, but, and, but that's, I think, too, also was brought on by Jody, she said that there would not be any amplification outside.
Okay.
Yes, that's true.
We do require sound evaluation, again, and this is with the new O requirements as a separate special land use.
And it.
There are different rules now that we're playing by.
And it does have in the special land use, noise emanating from such use shall meet the app, the acceptable decibel requirement set forth in the ordinance.
And that's a continuous.
So, it is there in that special land use section.
So the question is, do we need fifty acres?
Yeah, is that where we're at, fifty acres?
Well, and this is what, what was limiting, um.
Right.
It, it's, it's limiting.
One of the applicants doesn't have fifty acres, two of them.
Two of them don't, so, is that the intent?
We wanna reduce it.
Yeah, are we picking winners and losers?
Yeah, I, I think we're, I, I think you have to let.
Yeah, I think we need you, because there's not a lot of fifty acre parcels out there right now.
But keep it at two hundred feet setback and reduce it to thirty?
Right.
There's, there's, um, a hundred and forty.
And do we?
If you count the thirty-five that are up to fifty, or fifty or greater.
How many of those are on a paved roadway, though, maybe that's the, where you wanna cut it?
Well, probably yellow.
I mean, the only way to me for, to take us out of picking winners or losers, is if, whatever the property, if, if you let the parking dictate the volume, then it's the property that dictates the volume, not us at all. Because if they don't have parking, they can't have that many people, correct?
What equation do you propose? We could bus them in.
Mm-hmm.
Park somewhere else and bus people in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, if they pay the conversion money house, then, you know, we'll drive them by.
And you do see buses go to these things, so.
Yeah.
When, when they, remember when they had the house that they did on, uh, Center Road, the buses went by, from the elementary school?
So what do you advise?
House on T V.
I don't know.
Oh, um, I saw it, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't.
I don't think we should make it too small, you don't wanna open this up.
I lived through that.
Yeah, I lived through that.
Well, if you drop it to forty.
If you, if you drop it to forty, it doesn't really.
I was gonna say, you have to go almost to twenty-five.
Add too many, if you, if we, if we look at this, we've got forty to fifty is thirty-five parcels, and fifty or greater is a hundred and five. So whether you're gonna gain maybe another thirty-one if some of these people are at the forty.
Is this for the SAA only, though?
Correct.
This is for the SAA only?
Mm-hmm, right, but we're saying, properties that could apply for SAA that would fall in this size range.
It could be, it could be anyone.
Okay.
So, I mean.
And, and I'm just gonna throw out there again, do we want this to happen on dirt roads? Or do you want, do we want to limit it to parcels that are on paved roads?
I think you have to look at the number of parcels on the.
I don't think you can get too many car shows on a dirt road.
Wouldn't that be spot only?
Right.
No, um, so it goes back to appropriateness, it is appropriate for venues of significant public engagement due to traffic controls that they are paid, dirt roads are not intended on handling regular, I think the county, though they always have a say,
Right, hundreds of cars, yeah.
Right.
would greatly appreciate, um, some level of restriction for, again, these much larger venues, again, we don't have a participant, I don't believe, um, threshold here, um.
I mean, even if you left it at fifty acres, but made a stipulation that must be on a paved road, that would dr- drastically reduce the number of even properties in the township that we qualify.
So we don't have paved roads in the standards right now?
Correct.
We just have the traffic study.
We could add paved roads to the standard.
Yep, you could.
Under eight.
And I would, I would still keep on undersite requirements in that first part, and you would just add three and say, shall be located, you can say paved road, you can say a ca- a county primary road, I think.
Can't call it that, because Boardman is not paved, and it's a county primary road.
Again, again, so, again, you, you usually pick either both of those words, or one of those words.
I was saying, I was saying, yeah.
Um, so, if you think it's appropriate, most communities would consider appropriate to have to be on a paved road.
Okay, that would be, go where in the, min- the.
So the map does show the, I think it's the big bold lines on the lot area map.
But I'm saying, where do you put that in the?
So you'd put it under A three.
It's like three, minimum on the car.
Three, minimum site requirements.
Yep, cause it's a site attribute.
So, paved road?
Square to ten, yeah, okay, we're, we're, we're watching.
Yep. Alright, I'm putting it down as paved, and that means that we wanna eliminate the lot size?
Yeah.
Uh, did we say we wanna eliminate the lot size, or take it down to forty, or would it sit up there?
I just threw that out there, I wasn't.
Somebody said twenty-five also.
And it.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, like, if you, because this is designed for SAA, special outdoor events, or trying to encourage people to have, you know, businesses or whatever to do these events, you have a larger scaled event on a main road, but then you're, again, in the township, we have a tremendous amount of properties that would work great for this type of thing, at a lower volume, do you just make it a tech, a second stage, where if you want, if you wanna have a five, four, four hundred people, you know, event, and all this continuous all the time, then it needs to be on a paved road, but if you have a beautiful venue that you could have outdoor events at on a dirt road, do you just reduce the volume?
Yeah. Well, it's very, two months or, or.
Because if, how many, how many, how many properties are fifty acres or more on a paved road, like, we may have three properties that are even possible, and they might have any interest at all, and everything we're doing is for nothing.
Sure, that sounds good, uh, limit the number of people based on the street.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah, if it's a dirt road, you can, one, we're gonna cut the amount of events in half, and you can only have a maximum occupancy of whatever, you know, based on traffic.
It, it can only be spring and summer or something, because the roads are bad, and they're icy in the winter, you know.
Are you making it more complicated now?
Well.
I ju- I just, if, 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 I think if we don't, I don't think it's, I think it's pointless to even have it, because there's only three properties in the township that it could even work, you know?
I like simplicity, but.
Three.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, yeah, fifty acres, there's more than that.
I, I.
There's more.
Well, I, I, right, and I don't disagree, but I'm saying, you're not a paved road, cause there's fifty or more.
A paved road, yeah.
I am too.
Yeah, but there's.
But you're talking about making the minimum lot size smaller, not keeping it fifty, I think everyone's generally trending that direction.
Yeah.
But it's the amount of people that requires the paved road.
Okay, but I wanna keep in mind that I don't think we're encouraging people to do this, it's like, we, it's there to allow some people to do it.
Right.
It's not like we're encouraging, oh, we wanna have more, more events, so we're not trying to make it real easy for a bunch of people to do it.
Right.
And this is a special land use, so if somebody's trying to do it one time, they're not gonna go for this.
Right.
Right.
I didn't even get to hear about it.
Yeah, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can tell him.
And, and this has gotta be in the SAA district, it has to be underlying egg, and.
Agreed.
So, whatever.
Right.
It's not, it's not meant to apply to a bunch of people to, to make it work.
I think it's more of a consistent basis that this is gonna apply, like, where they have to hold them.
So I, yeah, and I guess for right now, then, I would just add the paved roads, if we wanna make it that larger scaling event, and then leave it at that.
I think, I think that's probably all you need to do.
So eliminate one, add three as discussed.
And you're eliminating one again?
I thought that's what you just said.
No, well, no, we'd go to thirty, well, you're talking about adding, if you had, went to thirty acres, you'd add how many properties?
Thirty acres.
Thirty acres. Um, potentially sixty-six.
But on paved roads.
Right.
Well, geez, I can't.
Yeah, exactly, but I mean, if you made it thirty acres.
That's, that's a longer countdown.
Come on, there's a filter button, right there.
Yeah, exactly, it's the digital, you know that?
I mean, there's a lot, there's more.
Yeah, almost made.
I'm just saying, if, if you make it thirty, but then add, like, you're, you're kind of eliminating some and adding some others, so you're gonna almost be meeting in the middle.
Alright, thirty paved, ready for public hearing, got it.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we really agree.
Moving along.
Right, yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me.
And then the intent, I'm looking at it from our current ordinance is.
And we're adding, and we're adding.
Purler, purl.
We're adding the intent.
We're trying to get away with one thing, like you say, you're never gonna hear about it.
Okay.
Uh, so the next point was going back to the setbacks, so either keeping it at two hundred or changing it to one hundred.
Hundred.
Well, you've got a, this minimum of a hundred feet is new.
Correct.
That's not, that's not in there.
It's throwing us off.
Yeah, I understand that.
We have two hundred.
Question is, do you want it or do you want it to be two hundred or one hundred?
Well, the two, the, what we have now is just two hundred feet with amplified sound.
Correct.
So you're sa- you're saying, I, it makes sense to have a hundred foot from all pro- minimum. And then it goes, it steps up when you get amplified sound.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think that makes sense, and also lowering from fifty to thirty reduces your possi- some possibility of getting that setback.
That hundred feet as well as the two hundred feet.
Yeah, you gotta be fortunate.
Okay. Now, what about, what about the traffic study, you have a lot of issues with that?
It says.
Um, but we, um, so we already talked about the duration real quick, um, so it's three per week, we're okay with that.
Yeah.
Three per week, okay.
Um, and then the other component was, um, we have the hours of operation, again, consistent with other things, eight to eleven, um, and that's only on Friday, Saturday and national holidays, as opposed to Sunday through Thursdays, eight to seven. Or do you wanna be consistent in copying what you did for Event Barnes?
We haven't gotta remember what we did on Event Barnes.
Uh, we didn't do days of the week.
We just said no event shall be conducted between the hours of eleven PM and eight AM.
So, any, any day they have to end by eleven, here we're saying seven on week, Sunday through Thursday. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but, was there any thoughts on that? I mean, why, why does everything have to be consistent when there are different uses?
It is a different use, this is more intention of this may, is likely to cause more of a nuisance, cause it's outdoor, and just posing the question, the answer can be simply, we like what we have, let's go.
Yeah, I do think it's better that way.
Right, sounds good. Um, so the traffic study, it's extremely uncommon to require this study after being built. Um, traffic studies are typically done in advance of it, based on proper, um, licensed professionals doing that, and so I feel like you're behind the eight ball if you're doing it after it's been built to verify that everything's okay.
Right, I would agree with that.
Who's saying that this is something that has to be checked out before it's built? I mean, this is special outdoor events.
So if you go to page.
It's in our ordinance. Sixteen, uh, eighteen forty. Or sixteen.
Seven, traffic shut.
In o- in order to help ensure safe and respa- and reasonable traffic operating conditions on the street and intersections after development of the event hosting facility, that should be done beforehand.
So it does have an A that you provide these forecasting numbers and things of that nature, but then
Yeah.
it's later that you can.
Require the, yeah.
I know.
Does that sound right?
So you're questioning about this after the development of the event hosting facility?
Correct.
Event, wait a minute, that's event hosting facility. This is special outdoor events.
After development of the, yeah, tell them the event hosting facility.
That's not correct.
Event hosting property?
That's why I highlighted it, it says after the development of the event hosting facility, and it's under special outdoor events.
You need to change the word though.
So that's a error. That was probably supposed to go to event hosting facility, which we, we're not doing anymore, so I guess it doesn't matter.
So what do we do?
Take the traffic study out.
We'll keep the traffic study as far as A is shown in seven A. Um, the question is, do you want the township board to be able to also waive the traffic study? Typically, it's something that's done at the planning commission level, um, because again, if you're re- how do you get over the informational requirement? So you're holding the public hearing. Uh, your recommendation approval, so you require it, but the township board can waive it. Does that make sense? Like it seems like a weird thing.
They, they can.
So, just take out the words by the township board.
Correct, and you would keep it to the planning commission, okay.
But it, it's only waived by the township board when the site has an existing use, okay, so you're saying that the planning commission instead of the board
Correct.
can waive that?
Yep.
Did you see below it?
And if the planning com- I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Did you see below it, uh, based on the road commission, paragraph here, okay.
Alright, can you think back to the Village of Romeo, the Abbey? Planning commission, um, denied that to be, and they're now a church, and that's how they can do that, yes. There's a whole big story behind it, and I know all the people involved, so I will, um.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Um, time shift, we've got six minutes to ten o'clock, and we got a, a section to finish.
And it's pretty much the same concepts.
Okay, so, so we, we're making a correction on the traffic study, where it says after development of the event hosting facility, and you're changing that to.
Yeah, no, we did.
Okay, so you've just got it shortened up, right here, you took out that set, that, you took out A. Correct, on the current ordinance?
Are you looking at page seven?
I'm on page seven, and I'm looking at our current ordinance, and so that, so this, you struck A and just had B and C.
Correct.
Which are now A and B, okay.
And, and you made up B?
No.
I don't see it in the ordinance.
Um, I believe that's consistent with other components you have.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is new, this yellow.
Yes, I don't see it here, I'm not gonna.
Okay, this is, maybe we're in the township board, but you're saying not the township board, you're saying the planning commission.
Yeah.
See the approval of the road commission.
Then they'll seek out the road commission.
Okay, so this is a whole new rewrite of the traffic study. So is everybody good with the yellow area of this traffic study?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I just was wondering where it was, but anyway.
So then we're moving on to section, are we good? Sixteen forty-one?
Yep.
The only thing I question on minimum site requirements, um, one A, or no, one B, um, is the fifty-one percent, at least fifty-one percent of fruit and other crops, um, grown by the applicant. If this is, is this SAA or just still?
Yep, this is SAA.
Then, so gams.
By the operator.
Yeah, and fifty-one, fifty percent, we can't, we can't do more than fifty percent.
Okay.
Let's stay with gams.
Run by the applicant.
Are we going fifty or fifty-one?
Fifty, we can't legally require someone to do fifty-one percent if they're operating by gams.
Right.
Gams is only fifty percent, and they su- we can't override gams.
Okay, so this is manufacturer.
Is this just manufacturer beverages though? That, that was the whole.
This is alcoholic beverages.
So, so the manufacturer of food needs to come out?
We can do cha- yeah, that's based on that.
Cause this isn't gamp protected, yeah.
Okay.
So you can't keep it at fifty-one or you put it back to fifty, um. But again, this, um.
But the title should be manufacturer of beverages, not food, yeah.
Unless you wanted to change alcoholic beverages to also be food.
Gotcha.
Change it to what?
Did you mean to keep it only to alcoholic beverages, or did you, do you mean it to be also for food? So there are hu- hard cideries, which again, are alcoholic, but you could just have plain cider.
But that's covered under add.
Yep, that's your cider mill, yep, so then you have other, again, people make a lot of different products, and so the question is, do you meant to keep it just alcohol?
That's the way it looks like.
There's not much mention of food.
It looks the way it's written, yeah.
But do you want it to still function that way?
Well, this is all, this is hiding. This is all, uh, basic alcoholic processing.
You can.
Distillery, fermentation, brewing, alcohol beverages.
Cider though, that's not alcohol cider.
If I, if I wanted to s- start a cider mill, and not make alcoholic cider. Can I just, do I, could I buy my apples to start my business, because it's gonna take me so long to grow my own trees?
This is under the SAA district.
Right.
And cider mills are already covered in ant.
Yeah, and cider can be alcoholic.
No.
Yeah, then. Then it's not.
So cider, cider mills.
Right, but that's.
That's hard cider or something.
Wow. Semantics, alright, I got you, I'm not being a jerk.
So, this, this ordinance was writ- written to allow distillation. Yeah, this was not written for food.
Yeah, I, but some people think alcohol's food.
So if you just take out the minimum site, A, one A, manufacturer of food and beverages, just manufacturer of beverage.
Yeah, beverages.
Yeah, cause then you've got your, your year-round kitchen deals with food. Yeah.
Yeah, we dealt with food already.
Yeah, the food doesn't really seem like it should be in that title, or in that.
I agree.
Okay, so I will change it to only be of beverages, and we want it to be of the alcoholic variety.
The label in and then more.
Got it.
One A.
Okay.
This doesn't, I mean, I can see manufacturing food, but this doesn't say anything about it.
I do have one quick question on the next page of sixteen forty-two, year-round kitchens receiving in areas. Um, food and number two, food and beverage shall be completed by, well, AM midnight, everything else is eleven PM.
Um, I see, oh, I see under sixteen forty-two. Yeah, she's right, everything is done by eleven o'clock.
And why, why would this one be midnight?
Yeah.
Anybody have any ideas?
So just take it out because, I mean, I would, rather than put a time limit in, just take it out, your event has to end at eleven.
Right, I'm sorry, DJ, we need a motion.
I'll make it.
Alright, Joe's making a motion to extend the meeting past ten o'clock.
Sorry, guys.
Do we have a, se- I'll, I'll second that, any discussion? Everybody's guys are still open? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we're, we're sixteen forty-two.
Yeah, and section A two, take that right out, because if events have to end at eleven.
Or, or put the time A to eleven, like the other thing.
Wait a minute, this, you're going to a different area here, that, you need to have that in there. This is, this is about your year-round kitchen, this isn't about events.
Oh.
Oh, well, serving alcohol. It's just a serving alcohol opposed to serving the food.
This is, this is about getting food into a, uh, somebody that's making alcoholic beverages. That was the intent of this one.
Year-round kitchen.
A winery, cider mill, microbrewer dessert may offer food service subject to the following conditions.
So, question, um, what happens if this was not a separate use, but was an accessory use of the be- manufacturer of beverages? Question is fundamentally, do you want to have kitchens year-round in the township ag, once they get SAA? Or is this literally meant as a restaurant as accessory? I think that's my fundamental question, from a policy standpoint.
I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent grasping the question.
So do you wanna have, again, kitchens have to be ex- to have a year-round kitchen, have to be manufacturing beverages? Or, can you have a restaurant if you're providing products from on-site of your farm?
Okay, this does not provide for that, this provides just these.
Cause I, I think it's more confusing when it's a separate use, because they're tied. So why wouldn't you put sixteen, um, forty-two under the manufacturing of beverages? If they are literally have to be together, why not put them together?
Well, it's not really the same.
They could very well done, yeah.
And change the rear setback. Sixty.
But if you want them to be tied, just put them in the same thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Makes complete sense.
Alright, so I'm gonna consolidate.
Okay, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yep.
Um, that means that A Jeff can't use this.
That's right.
And he's specifically looking for a year-round kitchen.
But, he can't, I mean, unless he's, becomes a cider mill, I mean, that was one of his options.
And he can't become a cider mill because he doesn't have the apple trees, um, so.
That's great, like, there's no way you, we can regulate like that.
As opposed to having a restaurant, as long as you have an accessory, or, again, you're going back to the agro-business juice, the per- producer provide fifty percent of the product for said restaurant, a farm-to-table type situation.
I think you have, yeah, I, I don't think you can li- I think you have to open it up, because if he's, Jeff wants to have the year-round kitchen, and then he sells his beef, it could be part of his, that fifty percent, like, you can't only make it alcohol, you can't only, you know, right, like.
So again, you've gotta think broader, not just people, um, do you wanna have restaurants year-round in our ag district if they get SSA as a reason?
Why are they giving the year-round kitchen privileges, just because they make alcohol?
Yep, so that's part of the question too.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a policy shift.
Year, the year-round kitchen is because you can just still imbue year-round. It's not seasonal, that's why you get the year-round kitchen.
Okay, that's why.
Whereas a farm is generally more seasonal, that's why you get eight months of food service, instead of a year-round kitchen.
But I've got cows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I wanna serve steaks.
Yep.
Chickens.
Steak and ice cream.
I say got chickens and, you know.
Well, that needs to be s- something different, I said, like, Leonard says, if you, do you wanna have year-round kitchens? Then we have to have an ordinance for it.
In the SAA district.
Do we want it?
Well, we.
It's called, it's called, a year-round kitchen's called a restaurant usually, right?
Yeah.
But we already have a year-round kitchen in an SAA, and it's just so, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna warn you for it, never mind.
It's a.
Restaurants are not allowed in ag, they're probably allowed in.
Commercial. Yep.
Be one, two, or something, okay.
So, I mean, you can tie it again to there being some type of farm agricultural aspect that is not uncommon, again, to permit farm-to-table type um, activities. Um, that's how, that's the typical coin term, is because again, fifty percent of the farm is going towards making that meal, or you're harvesting mushrooms from on-site, or maybe you're learning how do you make, uh, maple syrup? And so you have a few trees that are tapped, and so you tap it, and they're branding it overnight, so you're not using the actually ones that you collect in a bucket, but um, do you want that to be what you're having?
So what you're saying is you could take this ordinance and, and expand the places where you could have it.
You would essentially modify A to, yes, be more farm product.
Farm-to-table, okay.
Yep.
Exactly, and that, like.
And then they, then it would not become part of forty-one, it would be.
I think you take one of the two, otherwise.
The two routes.
Yep.
I think we should let people do it year-round if they can.
If it's ancillary to their ag business.
Doing, why do we make them stop? I mean, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, and then, and then what's the difference, you know, you know, there's a kitchen, there's kitchen, like I think where you order food, there's you know, that ad.
Adjunct.
Adjunct, and there's, uh, sit-down restaurants, so, I mean, there's, there's different levels of kitchens.
Correct, and you could control what this would apply. Some, when you have this accessory tasting room, you're only allowed to have adjunct. So that's how Dryden Township works. They do not want a full-service restaurant in their ag district, you need to go to our commercial district or be in the village.
So if you do farm-to-table, it would be like an event, we're gonna do so many farm-to-table events a year, and then you can do like a sit-down meal.
And again, should this be only allowed on paper?
On what?
Paper.
Roads.
Oh.
So, I'm just, and I know it's not like Coon, Coon Creek, where they have their dairy store, if they wanted to do.
Which they're on P's.
Yeah, Crook, Crook, well, no, no, I'm just, just thinking of it in a.
Crooked Creek or Coon Creek?
Crooked Creek, sorry, there's, if, if that were here, and they, say they wanted to, yeah, say they wanted to come in and say, alright, well, we wanna
Have another location.
Well, have another location, yeah, yeah, ta- take that whole farm and put it in our township, just for example. Put it on Crook Creek, and say, we want to add a restaurant, or a, add.
Not just an ice cream store, but, yeah.
Yes, how would they, where, I guess where would that fit in? I'm just trying to give us a scenario, to say like, okay, this is a feasible, this is, who would come in and approach us with this? How would you, they apply themselves to this?
Well, right now, the answer would be no, cause it's not an alcoholic-based beverage.
It's, we're only gonna let alcohol.
I've had bourbon milkshakes before when I was in the mountains.
Right, I, I guess what I'm saying is like, we're trying to, I, I don't, I don't think it's right to say, we're only gonna let companies that manufacture alcohol, like, I would love to take my family to a place that would be the same. We can't say that only alcohol.
Well, cider mills technically not alcohol, but it's, it's a beverage.
Manufacturers. Right, but, I'm.
Either way.
Any beverage then, any beverage.
Either way.
Either way, I just, I, if they can get fifty percent of the, from their beef, then they should be able to do what the same company is gonna do with, their same farm's gonna do with their cider. Just because, like, beef is no different than cider, in my opinion, if it's all being made on the farm, so why is it only the cider mills get to do this?
So, another example of where I've seen this applied, um, in the different communities, is you have like an old bed and breakfast, and then they have a farm, and then they wanna have it open to the public. So that, that, and again, that's more of your, um, Caseville kind of vacation-y towns or something like that, but that is. An example of when having that flexibility would be helpful, um, is because in a bed and breakfast, yes, you can host people overnight, but you can only cater your guests. You cannot have a public kitchen.
Okay, so it sounds like we want it, we have the ability to do a year-round kitchen?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't, I just don't think it should be only.
Cause the beef is a good example that, that it's.
Yeah, like, you can't, you can't only let alcohol dictate the community, like, or, or drinks or beverages.
Well, this is a, this is a, this ain't it. Because it's a minimum of twenty acre.
Yes, there are other problems.
Yes.
But again, we're not thinking of people, we're thinking of what makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not either. So it's, you, you gotta look at both ends.
Right, but he may not be the only one.
No, no, I'm not even talking about.
No, I know, but, but she's saying don't think of people, but somebody else may wanna do this also, and.
So.
Oh, I'm wrong. For sure. Okay.
So what's a, what's a good way to open this up to other things, would you specifically list?
In five years, or, you know, next year.
So I would keep it consistent with your other ag business-based things where it's fifty percent are grown by your operator. And again, it's not onsite, um, it's by the operator.
So it'd be grown or raised by the operator. So that would just be modifying A, the very first section, very first sentence.
Correct. Um, and then I would also have to modify four, unless we, again, that goes back to some of your discussions at the meeting I read your minutes of, when you talked about. Should the products be made by the applicant, cause right now that, that's the only alcohol that can be sold, um. As opposed to being a Michigan-made product, or within fifty miles product.
I like Michigan-made product.
Um. So just be mindful, most restaurants, um, they offer not just, especially breweries, sometimes they do only offer what is on their winery. But it's not uncommon that you have a few others that are not, so they sell Coke, for example.
Regional products. Right.
Um, they do not just sell wine, they sell Coke too, for those who are not partaking or done partaking.
So, four, you wanna open it up to any alcoholic beverages?
I think you want to change it from what you currently have, alcoholic beverages by the applicant.
Not any, delete any?
Wait. So you wanna change it to what?
I don't know, you, you guys need to tell me, is it by the, is it Michigan-based companies, is it products within fifty miles, um, again, thinking of, it is a.
Regional, it's a regional.
Full-service kitchen, it's illegal to sell Coke if you do Michigan-based, you could only do Faygo.
Is that, that's right.
I like that.
But this is talking about alcoholic beverages, I'm not following what you're.
Uh. Uh, I think there is a bottling facility in Michigan for at least Nestle.
Yeah. Yeah, there is.
What, then you're.
But yes, then we're, then you have your zoning administrator going out and checking product labels.
Wait, this, this is only.
Nope.
Yeah.
But this is only applying to alcoholic beverages, just so you don't have bars, I mean, it doesn't apply to.
I guess it's a fair interpretation if you wanted to, um.
A bar, okay, so if you have a bar, they sell Coca-Cola or whatever.
Well, he's saying that again, it says only alcohol is sold by the applicant.
Well, yeah, cause you're.
We're not limiting.
I, I, I get that.
This is only talking about alcohol.
But you know how it derails?
No, so I did mislead you a little bit, yep, I apologize for that, um.
Alcoholic beverages sold at retail, yeah, that's, that's correct, I mean, you wouldn't want.
So.
So if you're selling a bottle of wine or cider, that.
You should be producing.
Because you're selling it at retail.
You should be producing it.
Right, if you're selling it.
As.
Sealed, uh, it's a sealed bottle.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if you have.
Or selling a glass or a pint or a whatever.
Cause we're getting back to fifty percent are grown by the operator, um, so again, Coke is something that, again, that could be one of the fifty percent that they buy.
I'm not, yeah, I'm careful, yeah.
So that's, that's okay, um.
Okay.
Um, if we wanted to do that, or did you wanna make it, so it is Michigan-made products?
I don't think so.
It don't, it doesn't sound like you wanna go that far, okay.
No, and you keep throwing me with the Coke.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
We're talking about serving alcohol.
And it can only be the alcohol if they choose, so again, a restaurant in our new classification, they don't produce alcohol, they cannot sell any alcohol.
If, if they. Right, right, cause now you're turning it into a restaurant that is a, also can sell alcohol, like bars.
Correct. As opposed to saying you have to pick alcohol that's at least Michigan-based.
So four stays, are we adding a five about food made by the proprietor?
Um, that's part of, gonna be part of A.
Part of A, we're gonna stand that.
Is that it asks to be, um.
A five, yeah, are we gonna make a, uh, item five under A?
No, this is gonna, instead of just it being winery cider mill, microbrewer, distillery, it's going to expand so that if you're raising beef or, you can, you can do the year-round kitchen.
And I would take out any, uh, on number four, any alcohol beverage sold at a retailer, I'd say alcohol beverages sold at a retailer. On number four, A five, A four.
Yeah, any would, it's just, it's just fuck, it's, you don't.
Yeah, you're trying to produce, it's local, so stick like she said, through Michigan-based.
So is this, okay, so it's a year-round kitchen, a seating area and tasting.
So. Strolls beer.
So it's a lot?
Yes.
And that would be a yes, because it's produced in Michigan.
Yes. Correct.
So, I have a, I don't know if it's still produced.
I don't know if it's still, I don't.
Bells?
I may then have a.
Oh, bells.
Oh, there's a lot of microbrews in Michigan.
Oh, bells.
O'Brien, is it, O'Brien, something like that.
It's bells, okay.
The title, the title of this is a, a year-round kitchen with seating area and tasting room, so the idea is that this is a tasting room for something you're producing.
It's accessory, yep.
So I guess you can taste beef, or you can taste all these beverages, but.
Yes, you can.
So, and this is talking, year-round kitchen with seating area, this is talking about, I'm sitting down with a menu, and I'm having a meal like a restaurant.
Unless you wanted to tie in, again, this goes back to, for some communities, when they do manufacturing of beverages, they allow you to have a tasting room. And then, most communities will say you have to have the adjunct food services, it's prepackaged, it's not a full-service restaurant, that's too intense.
Right.
And the point behind that is you're not giving somebody all these tastings of alcohol and not providing them something to soak up that alcohol.
So, I guess my question is, is if we're. Is it stipulating here that it's not a sit-down, this is, um, this is, I guess regulated to that adjunct food in this year-round?
Currently no, currently no.
Kitchen with seating?
Year-round kitchen, this is basically a restaurant, that's what.
Okay, so my question is, long-term with this, if we continue to allow these to, in the next ten to twenty years, fifteen years, we're going to end up with a bunch of accessory restaurants. Where if we say, yeah, we want to have these farms produce the beverages, the ground beef, all of the produce or products associated with it. But if you want to have a sit-down restaurant, then we would try to push them into our commercial district of Armada, and let them have the restaurant in the commercial district, but the farm could provide everything. Cause I just feel like we're gonna end up with a bunch of restaurants in the next twenty years randomly placed throughout the township.
So.
That's okay.
I mean, small home.
And so you wanna tie it to a paved road.
Small home. Home agriculture-based restaurants like Mama's Kitchen, then this becomes part of our community, it becomes part of our economy out here.
Right, but it's seven, seven miles down the, like, I just, I could see it being very all over, instead of just building the community with your. Commercial district, right, like, how, how do you, how do you, again, I'm just thinking long-term, like.
I don't think you can support that. But, right now it's only at, like, Blake's, and this is for the SAA only.
I think that, and again, I don't mean to pick on Blake's or whatever, I think it's fantastic, but I also think this is written very much because of just how Blake's had developed.
So it has.
But if you develop the Blake's on Coon Creek Road, and then you develop one on Boardman, then you develop one on, I'm not saying that's not a good thing for the community, but I also think that.
So we think.
Aket's Pie does very well having their store in the commercial district while they manufacture it in another facility, is all I'm saying. Like, do you control that, let them still produce it and everything else, but just.
Be in the right spot.
Be in the right spot, I, if, if, it's a very.
Yes, you do control it. Yeah.
Well, no matter what, this is spot zoning, if you love this to just happen wherever it may happen.
No, no, you're controlling it. You're, you, you wanna direct them into the, you know, within their parameters, that's why you're setting this.
Right. Right, but the only person, people who would even consider doing this is, are, are farms, the farms aren't stacked up in a commercial district.
But what about bed and breakfasts?
In an, in a district, they're all, they're literally placed around.
No, it's, but you can, this is an option for them to see.
And I'm, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just bringing something up.
I, I didn't. Yeah, I, I just.
It's a thought.
Yeah, I got you. And the sixty foot's that way.
I'm playing the question, you do care.
So we, we figure out anything with this, are we gonna keep it separate, and we're gonna reword it to allow? Other uses?
I just, um, opening up, as an example, opening up the beef, I could sell a lot of hamburgers with, I don't know, five cows?
Yeah.
And is, do we want everybody with?
Cows, yeah.
Twenty acres and five cows open up? I, I don't know, I don't know that somebody, somebody that can manage five cows on a small farm maybe isn't the right person to say, you know what, you can manage a restaurant, and you can manage all these people coming in.
You had chickens and pigs, you could have a breakfast.
Like, there, it's two very different businesses, just because you can raise cattle and you can do a great job growing certain things, Blake's is a phenomenal exception of a success story. I'm saying that's not feasible for your, you know, maybe say common person that just wants to try to open a restaurant.
Which is why it's accessory typically to the manufacturer to beverages.
Right, right.
Right, that's why I don't really feel that you need to expand this.
It's like how beef gonna equal.
Right. Yeah, that's how this conversation started, is, uh, top line is getting removed.
Yeah. Year-round kitchen, okay, well.
What if we just leave it?
So do you want it, she want it, and we'll have a meeting next month, and you'll see the draft three, um, and which has otherwise everything we talked about, um.
Do we want it?
Yeah.
Probably, yes, people will see about it. That makes sense.
Based on our general idea, C will, and the setbacks for R will be changed to be sixty, like, we've otherwise talked about, and the rest will rain check.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, okay.
Me don't want to take them off.
Okay, so we need a, do we need a motion to table?
Yes, I'll make it.
I'll support that motion to table the. What is this?
Murray, okay, I'm in favor of motion to table to next meeting, say aye.
Say A two forty-two.
Update in the A D and S A's on the ordinances, second draft.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, that's all, it's on the agenda, there's no public online. It's now ten twenty-four. A motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Who was, who was, who got the?
I think.
You can say it. Go ahead.
I had a motion to adjourn from somebody.
Oh, from me?
I, I was, I made the first one.
Jeb? Okay, and, um, Steve?
I'll second that, yeah.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Everybody. Everybody motion, yeah, okay, so, so DJ, who are you going with?
Yeah.
Aye.
I got Joe Jeb and Steve Arrow.
Okay.
Did I get that right? Is that a mere agreement on that?
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
Okay.